Evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock. We're going to call the meeting to order. Bridgewater Township Zoning Board of Adjustment, December 9th, 2025. Adequate notice this meeting was provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. Specifically on January 15th, 2025, proper notice was sent to the Courier News and the Star Ledger and filed with the clerk at the township of Bridgewater, posted on the municipal bulletin board. Please be aware of the zoning board of adjustment policy for public hearings. No new applications will be heard after 9:30 p.m. and no new testimony will be taken after 10 p.m. If you're able, please rise for the salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Nancy. Could we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Foose?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mrs. Amin?
Yeah.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Fresco?
Here.
Mr. Bonjourno?
Here.
Mr. Gajewski?
Here.
Mr. Seacat?
Here.
Lulak?
Here.
Mr. Vecio?
Here.
And for the record, Mr. Gabbit will be absent. You have a quorum. You can proceed.
All right. And we got our board professionals here.
Sorry, I skipped. Rich Aller, board attorney.
Here.
Bill Burr, board engineer.
Here.
Catherine Sarmad, board planner.
Here.
And Maurice Rashad, traffic engineer.
Here.
Great. Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to open up the meeting to members of the public that would like to address the board on any land use matter that is not on our agenda this evening. Good evening, Councilman Kirsch.
Good evening. Wow, it's great to be on this side. So I'm Michael Kirsch. My address is 25 Danbury Lane here in Bridgewater, and I am a member of the Township Council. And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to open the compliment department. Can I do that?
No complaints, only compliments. We serve at your leisure, so the microphone's yours.
So the reason I want to appear before you briefly is just to really state my appreciation to each of you and to your collective efforts, both on behalf of myself and the Township Council. I've often said that we need to be very careful as we adjust and reshape the face of Bridgewater, and that means on the council, that means on the planning board, that means on the zoning board. I know each of you takes this responsibility extremely seriously, the preparation that you do, the time that you spend in this room, the care that you take with the various cases that appear before you. Our boards have, I believe, a well-deserved reputation, that applicants are going to have a fair, thorough hearing, and I just really want to thank you for doing that. You're doing a tremendous service for the residents of Bridgewater Township. And I know not too many people come up here and compliment in just this way. I know that we talk about how you are a very hard-working board, doing important work, so thank you for that. There may be some changes in the makeup of this board after the Township Council reorganization. We're working through that. So for any who do not continue, I want to particularly thank you for your service. And any who are going to be continuing, your commitment to our community is greatly appreciated. And enjoy the remainder of your hearing.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Just real quick, if tonight is my last meeting, I want to thank you tremendously from the bottom of my heart for your friendship, for your hard work. If it's not my last meeting, I'm looking forward to another four years. But either way, I've really enjoyed this, and I couldn't do it without you. And thank you for the sacrifice, for missing all the dinners and the family events to be here every other Tuesday. It's tough sometimes, and we've had some tough cases. But I just wanted to say thank you. Happy holidays. And by all means, the mic is open if anyone has any other comments.
I would like to compliment the Chair, Mr. Foose, for the work that he's done over the last several years. We hope that he is able to come back and continue to lead this board, because I think he's done it with grace, with courage. I know he's always represented the people of Bridgewater and has offered safety as the guiding light to guide this board. At the same time, there's a level of fairness here that applies both to the public and, of course, any applicant that stands before this board. And he's made sure that that has not only been the standard by which we operate, but continues to do so. So thank you, Mr. Foose.
Thank you, John. That's very nice of you.
Jeff, I'll just second that. Thank you.
Should we vote? All right. Any other public comment?
I have one other comment, and I'm sorry, I'm waiting for the public. But I know, Mr. Sweeney, I think this is the end of your term as well, and you've served the board a long time. I thought you might want to share some comments, but I would compliment you on your continued support for the people in Bridgewater, the work that you do. I know sometimes it's very difficult to take a position and stick to it, and you always manage to do that. So thank you for your service as well.
All right. Please come. Sorry.
Hello. My name is Carol Enjoya. I live in Bridgewater, 1402 Paley Court. This is my first zoning board meeting. I'm more familiar with the council meetings, and I'd like to just follow on with Councilman Kirsch's comments and also echo from now having read a transcript from one of your meetings, because I am a court reporter and I do love transcripts. You guys do a fantastic job, and you don't let anything go unsaid. So I'm very impressed, and I'm very thankful to the court reporter who did a great job with the transcript. In so doing, the reason I'm here tonight is because I originally thought that the storage unit facility would be on the agenda. And to my chagrin, after calling many, many of my neighbors this weekend, I found out late Saturday night that it was postponed. However, thank you for offering public comment. And thank you for also not cutting us off. I noticed you let people get what they need to say out, so I appreciate that. I can say, I can't ask questions because they're not here tonight, obviously, but I can say one of the reasons that I moved to Bridgewater was because of the farms. If you go online and you say, "Is Bridgewater a good place to live?", it'll probably say three things: good schools, good commute, and farms. Now, originally, I moved to Warren, I'll be fair. I loved Barty Farms. I loved Melangas. I was, you know, very happy. Then I moved to Martinsville, just on the border. And now I'm in Bridgewater, you know, as kids are out of the house and have downsized. And I live pretty close to Melax Farm, and I really, really, really love it. Now, it's not right in my backyard or front yard, like some of the other people who've spoken. I'm probably about a five-minute drive away. I live in Beacon Hill. However, I'm on 22 a lot, and I'm on the roads around Melax Farm. And that's what concerns me, is really the traffic safety. And I took time to go to the top of the hill and...
Oh, ma'am, I'm sorry, but that applicant's not here tonight, and I don't think it's really appropriate for the board to take any kind of comments, especially unsworn testimony, about an application that's pending before the board. You have the right to come up when that application is heard.
But I thought it said things that aren't on the agenda.
Technically, it is on the agenda, and they're not here, and I don't think it's appropriate that we take that. And it's not even sworn testimony. At the time of the hearing, I will swear you in, and you can make as long and detailed a statement as you would like on that application, but that would be the more appropriate time to do it.
I understand that, and I appreciate that. I'm not going to be here on the 13th, so I would just ask that you would allow me to ask if anyone knows about...
They're probably not going to be heard on the 13th anyway, so...
Excuse me?
The 13th is the reorganization meeting, and they will be assigned a hearing date on the 13th. So it's not going to be heard on the 13th. It's being moved to the 13th for the purpose of assigning a hearing date.
So we don't have a date yet when it's going to be...
We don't, because, right, the board has to reconvene and restructure itself in January and adopt the new calendar, all right? So that'll happen first, and then pending applications will be assigned out a hearing date, all right?
So after the 13th, we'll get a new date?
Correct. On the 13th.
On the 13th, and that'll be on the website?
It'll be announced at the hearing on the 13th, at this meeting on the 13th, and then, Nancy, I suppose it'll be on the website? Is that what you do?
Yes, it'll be on the website.
Yeah, so yes.
On the agenda for the next meeting.
Right.
Okay. In between now and then, I just want you to know that Route 22 is a federal highway, and you have access to a rural safety assessment that's free by the New Jersey Department of Transportation. And I encourage you all to use this extra time that we have to look into requesting one of those free traffic safety studies for Route 22, a federal highway. Thank you. We'll see you on the 13th. Well, I might not be here, but thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we're going to close that portion. We're going to move on. We have no minutes, I believe. We have two resolutions. First up, we're going to do 756 Harding Road. Comments or changes on the board, please?
So I have one. Appears on page three, the word "policy" should be "police", so it would be, you know, Township Police Department, not the Policy Department. Other than that, there were no changes.
All right. Motion, please?
I move.
Second.
I second.
Amen was second. Waddell was first, made the motion.
Foose?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mrs. Amin?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Gajewski?
Yes.
All right. Next up, we're going to do Bailey Holdings, 21 Mount Pleasant Avenue. That's a dismissal without prejudice, right, Rich?
Yes, without prejudice to refile, and no changes.
All right. Comments or changes? If none, motion, please?
I move.
Mr. Wiley, second was Mr. Bonjourno.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Chairman Foose.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mrs. Amin?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Fresco?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjourno?
Yes.
Mr. Gajewski?
Yes.
All right. Now, we're going to get to applications. First up, we're going to do a residential case, Quiznick, 1065 Carteret Road. Mr. Sullivan, good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Sullivan. I'm an attorney with the offices of Astola and Sullivan. I'm representing John Quiznick tonight. He is the owner of the property at 1065 Carteret Road. That property is located in the Arc 50 Zone, and it's fully improved with a single-family dwelling, as well as a driveway, and some typical residential site improvements. We're here tonight seeking bulk variance relief. This would permit the construction of an addition to the existing home. It's going to expand the living space, believe it or not, by only about five square feet. And what it will do is allow us to have a second car, a second car garage. So we're adding 274 square feet to allow for a second garage space. The plans that we've submitted are the architectural plan prepared by Joseph Marchesi. That's dated November of 2024. We've also submitted a variance plan prepared by David Stires Associates, which is dated January 15th of 2025 and last revised August 29th of 2025. And we also submitted a survey prepared by David Stires Associates, and that's dated June 17th of 2024. As noted in your staff report, there are a few pre-existing non-conformities for the lot, including lot area, lot width, front yard setback. And in connection with this application, we are also enhancing the side yard setback. 25 feet is required, 11.7 feet is existing for one side yard, and 5.8 feet is proposed in connection with the garage expansion. In terms of combined side yard setbacks, 70 feet is required, 29.6 feet is existing, and we are proposing 17 and a half feet in connection with that. So those are essentially the variances and the reason why we're here tonight. In terms of witnesses, I have Mr. Quiznick. He's going to explain, you know, a little bit about the property and what he's proposing to do. We have our architect, Joseph Marchesi, and our civil engineer, David Stires. And if I may, I would begin with Mr. Quiznick.
I have a question. On the form, it says that these variances were previously approved. Can you explain what that's about?
That's most likely a typo. I don't know if there's been any prior approvals on this. As a matter of fact, we did an Oprah search, and we did not come back with any zoning prior approvals.
Thank you.
Mr. Quiznick, if you would remain standing, please. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Mr. Quiznick, you are the owner of the property at 1065 Carteret Road?
Yes.
And how long have you owned that property?
I purchased the property in 1978.
And you continue to reside there?
Yes. My wife passed in 2022, and I've resided there by myself since that time.
And that property is fully improved with a single-family dwelling?
Yes.
And that is a one-story ranch?
Yes.
And it has a one-car attached garage?
Correct.
But it does have a two-car-wide driveway, correct?
Yes.
And you have a basement and an attic as well?
Yes. The basement's under the, basically, most of the home, except for the family room. The family room's on a slab.
And you propose to construct an addition to the home in accordance with the plans that we've submitted?
Yes.
And as I mentioned, that's to add a second car garage?
Correct.
And so why do you wish to do that?
I own two automobiles. One's an everyday driver, a 2018 Audi, and I also own an exotic car, an Aston Martin 2007 Advantage, and I keep it garaged. I'd like to be able to also garage my driver, everyday driver.
And we're proposing this, if you're standing in the street looking at your property, we're proposing this, of course, to the left side. The most obvious reason is that's where the garage is. But I wanted to talk a little bit about the neighbor to your left. Do you know approximately about how far away your new garage will be from their existing home?
I know currently that there's 35 feet between their existing home or garage, which is under their home, and my property line. And I believe my addition would be 12 feet from my existing building.
Okay. Well, it's actually going to be just over five feet, so about 40 feet total separation between the two structures?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have for Mr. Quiznick.
I didn't quite understand that. There's a proposed side yard setback on that side of the house of 5.8 feet, correct?
Yes.
Can you make it any bigger than that? I mean, I drove around your neighborhood. I couldn't see another house that had a side yard as small as less than six feet.
Based on the existing property lines and the addition of the garage, that's where places it. I guess we could downsize the garage somewhat. I'm not sure. Have to ask the architect if that is possible.
Are you aware of any other homes in the area that have a side yard less than six feet?
I've never done any such, you know, survey on my own, no.
I take that to be a no.
There could be.
But you don't know of any?
Not, you know, something that I know. I know there's properties that are very close, based on the garages, but to the other property, but I don't know the exact distance.
Let me ask you this, then. If we approve your application, would you be willing to work with the board planner to find some kind of vegetative buffer that would enhance the distance between your proposed expansion and the home next door? In other words, six feet is not a whole lot of setback. I'd like to find some way to improve that in terms of the impact on your neighbor.
I've spoken to the neighbor already, and all four of my touching neighbors, basically, you know, I can see when I open my front door, they all said they're fine with the addition of the garage.
Right. But the question is, along your property line?
Would I be willing to...
Plant some evergreens?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other board questions for Mr. Quiznick? Members of, I'm sorry, board professionals, questions for Mr. Quiznick? Members of the public? All right. Thank you.
Our next witness would be our architect, Joe Marchesi.
John, while he's coming up, I want to make a couple of announcements. I don't know if we have people in the audience for two applications that are not going to be heard this evening, so while he's making his way up here, let me do that now. So there's two matters on the agenda, one of which is Bridgewater self-storage. Bridgewater self-storage is not being heard this evening. It is being adjourned until the board's meeting on January 13th, 2026, for the sole purpose of assigning that a new date. There'll be no further notices from the applicant. The application, as you heard me say before, that application is not being heard on the 13th, but a new date being assigned to it on the 13th. And also, application filed by Rockland APV Bridgewater Energy LLC is not being heard this evening. That, too, is being rescheduled to the reorganization meeting on January 13th, 2026, and again, for scheduling purposes only. So at that reorganization meeting, that will be provided, that will be given a new hearing date. So again, that's Bridgewater self-storage, Rockland APV, not being heard. Neither one of them will provide additional notices to the public. Okay? Thanks, John. Yes.
Chairman, I just want to clarify something before we go to this witness. On this variance tax block, it shows we're talking about Lot 30. Why on here is it showing 3031? Is there a lot to the west of this? Because this basically backs up, this here backs up to these lots here, but on here, it shows that there's another lot. What's not right? Because that would mean that the lot is basically, according to this, it would be back, there's a house, a lot directly to the west. With this, the west is the back of...
You're comparing it to page two of the planner and engineering report, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, they're different.
Yes.
Right. And that's also the location map, as shown on this survey as well, matching the planner's letter.
So is there a Lot 31 or not?
According to the tax map in our survey, yes, there is. To the left of us would be Lot 31.
So this page is incorrect, then? Variance plan, page two is incorrect.
Let's ask Mr. Stires that same question when he comes up?
Fair enough.
He's going to have a survey to present.
I just think it bears on where this, if he's going to agree to vegetation, you know, basically the back of the lot, or it's the side of a lot. Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Would you please stand? Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And your name, please? And can you spell your last name, please?
M.R.C.A.D.S.
Thank you. You can say it. Thank you.
Mr. Marchesi, could you start by stating your qualifications for the board?
I received my license, practice architecture in New Jersey.
You know, I'm sorry again, but would you pull that microphone closer to you? Thank you.
I received my license to practice architecture in New Jersey in 1998, and since then, aside working with others, I started my own practice in October 2002.
And is your license still in good standing?
Yes.
And have you previously appeared before in the planning or zoning board and been admitted as an expert in terms of architectural testimony?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the site and the application before the board tonight?
Yes.
And just, that license is with the state of New Jersey, right? Okay.
We would ask that, Mr. Marchesi, please.
Yeah, if there's no board objection, this board accepts him as a professional architect.
And you prepared the plans that have been submitted to the board?
Yes.
And can you describe the structure as it currently exists?
It is currently a single-story frame dwelling, half-bath, basement under half of the residence, crawl space and single-car garage.
All right, John, is that microphone on?
Green light is lit.
You have a green light? Okay.
You've got to get a little closer to the light.
Yeah. Okay. Better.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Marchesi.
Okay. Single-family frame residence with a basement, a family room on a slab, and a one-car garage.
And can you explain to the board the addition that we are proposing?
We're doing a small, five-square-foot renovation of the master bath, squaring out a little of a already cant-levered section fitting under the roof, current roof overhang. There will be no foundation for this, and then we are proposing to add a second car garage to the left side of the residence.
And that's about 274 square feet?
Correct.
And in terms of the facade materials, are we going to be able to match what's existing?
We intend to match what is existing.
Now, Mr. Sweeney had asked a question. Is it possible to reduce the size, to enhance the side yard setback? Is that possible or not?
There is room to move the wall a little bit. I'd be a little bit concerned about the interior space if he's going to be using it for a car that he wants to take care of.
So you feel that what we proposed is the better alternative to trying to reduce the size?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have for Mr. Marchesi. I don't think there's anything in the staff report that he needs to address.
I have a question. I'm looking at this diagram, and it looks like Lot 30 has a paved driveway that's almost up to the property line, correct?
Lot 30 does have, yes, it's a two-car-wide driveway.
Okay. So, but it's right up to the property line practically?
It's close, yeah.
Okay. So, all right. And in this picture, where you have the Audi parked, is where you want to put the garage extension, right?
Yes.
These are your pictures.
My eyes aren't as good as they used to be. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So I guess the point of information to the board is that he parks the car there now, so instead of just having the car there now, it's going to have a roof and a side. I don't see a lot of difference. If he puts up some sort of privacy, plantings, I don't see much of a change. That's my point.
Thank you.
Point of information.
Any other board questions?
Yes, I have a question. Did you look at, instead of a double, like, side-by-side garage, look at a garage, sort of a tandem garage, where a second car could be parked, the garage extended to the rear?
of a tandem garage, where a second car could be parked, the garage extended to the rear?
Looked at it, but what I was really trying to do is, how would I really roof that other than coming in with a reverse gable or something that I didn't want it to make the, devalue the, you know, aesthetic of the house?
If you use a microphone, you can.
Right now, my deck extends right behind the existing garage, so to make a tandem garage, I'd have to remove my deck.
Any other board questions? Board professionals?
Thank you. So I think Mr. Sweeney's question to the applicant initially was a good one and a good, you know, a good way to mitigate any impacts from the setback, because even if the neighbors today are happy, you know, or okay with it in concept, I think having extra screening from the street view for any future neighbors is always, you know, a positive to help break up any of the impacts from a setback. So I do, I do agree and would appreciate working with the applicant's professionals if it's looked favorably upon. I wouldn't necessarily say, I think fencing, if you put up a fence at that point, you might squeeze out the ability to do landscaping, so I'll leave it to the board to what they want, but I do think a vegetative buffer is probably, probably better as long as it's maintained. This probably isn't for the applicant, but I just wanted to, in conversations for when this project was being put together, is the original garage space, is it going to be the same size as the garage that exists right now? The proposed garage, is it going to be about the same, is it going to be symmetrical to the existing garage?
Yes.
And what size is that garage? Is it eight-foot wide?
It's 11.
It's 11 feet wide, okay. And do you, is that garage currently utilized for car storage, are you aware?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the size of the garage that's being proposed is going to be large enough, right, to store the vehicles that it's being proposed to be used for, and that if the current space is not adequate for a car, because it's too narrow or not deep enough, that what's being proposed will adequately capture what it's being proposed to be used for.
Yeston Martin is a very small sports car.
Well, I want to make sure you don't have to scratch it to get it in there, so I just want to make sure that the garage has been sized adequately.
Or your architect.
So what is going to be the width of the garage opening?
We have two nine-foot-wide doors.
And that's enough to get a car in and out without scratching it, correct?
Yes, the overall width of the garage will probably be around 22 and 1/2 feet, actually it's only 22 feet. Enough to fit the cars, it is a little bit undersized to current-
Please talk into the mic.
The garage will be about 22 and 1/2 feet wide, it's about 22 feet deep. It's a little bit undersized based on today's current massive cars, but still decent enough.
Undersized by how much, I'm sorry?
A typical garage is 24 by 24 these days.
So-
Two feet in each direction.
Okay, Catherine?
Yeah, I just wanted to understand, you know, the parameters and the dimensions, because I do think oftentimes we hear, you know, and not even just in this municipality, about people expanding their homes for garages, and oftentimes we find additional garages being added because garages are used for storage of things, and I just want to make sure that this could accommodate a vehicle, because it's important that, if that's what we're predating the variance relief on, right, that that's what it's utilized for.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, the testimony I heard was there is a car in there today. Were you saying, I think you just said no, that there's not.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
So there is, a car is, yes, you currently have, and you'd like to put the other one in there?
Yes.
Okay, right, so the pictures that we saw here, you had both of the cars out just to show what the garage looked like, right? Okay.
I've had my standard Audi in the garage.
All right, but we need you to use the microphone if you want to add that.
I previously parked my standard driving car, my Audi A6, in the garage prior to purchasing the Yeston Martin. After purchasing the Yeston Martin, my Audi no longer resides in the garage, the Yeston Martin took over.
All right, we're all good on garage size. Catherine, you good?
Thank you very much.
Can you describe how you're going to add this garage? I can't get a mental picture of, what are you going to, just build the roof and a side and a back? You're going to tear down what's there? I don't, I can't imagine what you're doing.
I'm going to extend the front and rear walls to the, to the left side, out the 12 feet, and it'll have a foundation, a slab, and we are going to align the roof line so there's no break and it's a continuous set look like it was always there.
Just so that I understand, in this picture here that you looked at a moment ago, you're going to just take this wall out and extend it?
To the side. We're not coming forward, we're not coming back, yes.
Thank you, I'm good now.
Professionals, anyone else? All right, members of the public, questions on architectural testimony? All right, seen none, back to you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. Our third and final witness will be David Steiers, our engineer.
Mr. Steiers, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and your name for the record, please?
David Steiers.
Yes. Thank you.
And Mr. Steiers, would you state your qualifications for the board?
I'm a professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey since 1989, and my license is in good standing. Would you like me to continue?
No, no, this board accepts you, you've been in front of us many times, good to see you again, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Steiers, you prepared the site plan and drawings that we've submitted to the board?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the site and the application?
I am.
And can you describe the site as it currently exists?
Yeah, so we're on Carteret Road, we're approximately 1,200 feet east of Brown Road. Excuse me, there's a ranch with a one-car garage on the south side of the house. Across the street, there is also a ranch similar to this one in nature with a two-car garage. There is one to the north with a two-car garage, also a ranch, and then on the south side, there is a split level with a two-car garage on the north side, so it's a side-loaded garage. Slopes and grades generally slope towards Brown Road. There is a swale, we're kind of on the upland side of this swale, it's just starting to be established. It runs down towards Brown, underneath Brown, and into Sunset Lake and becomes Chambers Brook, somewhere downstream of the subject properties. Again, there's an existing one-car garage, there is a width there as you approach the garage on the south side of the property that extends so that there's pavement on the south side of the existing house. As one of the board members had stated, that area is paved and one of the cars is parked adjacent to the existing house on the south, and in the general area where this proposed garage is to be installed, which is the dark brown on the colored rendering. Mr. Sullivan mentioned pre-existing nonconformities, we have a 50,000 or 50 zone, 36,500 square feet exist, 165 feet of frontage is required, 100 feet of frontage exist currently, and that is consistent with a majority of the properties on Carteret. They're all rectangular, narrow frontages with very long extended rear yards. The front yard setback is in existing condition, 56.1 where 75 is required. As you can see on the colored rendering, it is consistent with the adjacent properties both on the west and the east side of Carteret. So these lots were probably created prior to the R50 zone being put in place, so there are a lot of existing nonconformities relating to those properties.
Mr. Steiers, before you go forward, would you just mark that exhibit as A1 with today's date on it, please? And that is not a sheet that we have that you rendered, correct?
It is, please, never.
Okay, but it's a different sheet, right? Okay.
There was a comment in the professional reports about drainage, so basically we're talking about 280-some square feet of additional impervious or lot coverage, and I want to state on the record that that is a little bit in error. We did not include the pavement under the proposed garage, so that number's closer to about 130 square feet, which is pretty nominal when you're talking about stormwater and drainage improvements, but I would defer to the board and the board's professionals as to whether or not they think that the impacts would require a dry well or some kind of pertinences for stormwater upgrades. The flow of runoff basically runs, Carteret is slightly higher than the existing house, and what happens is there's a swale that runs south and north, like I said, to Brown Road, and it's behind the existing houses and west of actually Mr. Quiznick's deck and runs down kind of the center of those properties on the, on the west side of Carteret. Again, we're up on the upland side of that drainage feature, so there's not a significant amount of water or runoff in that location.
Now, in connection with the proposed improvements, are we proposing to remove any trees?
No, we are not.
And I think there was also a question in the Joint Engineering and Planning Review Report as to whether or not we have to make any further driveway improvements.
Now, the way the driveway is currently constructed, it does wrap around and include where that, or is in front of where that proposed garage door will be for the garage. There may need to be a little bit of a leveling course to get up to that finished floor elevation, but all in all, the impervious coverage as currently exists will be what is required to get into that garage.
And you would be able to work with the board professionals to set up a, some plantings to provide screening?
Yes, we can do that, yes.
And do you know if there's any, what's proposed, perhaps I should have asked this of Mr. Marchesi, are we proposing any additional lighting?
No, we are not.
Now, I would just, in terms of your planning hat, if you could talk a little bit about the hardship that we are, that we are talking about here in terms of why we need the variances?
Yeah, well, again, you know, I go back to the lot width and the current zoning and the current lots that are, that exist on Carteret. There are 100-foot-wide lots, we do have a garage on the south side of the property or the house, and we propose to extend that. Mr. Quiznick had talked about not being able to punch that garage through and do a double garage as suggested by one of the board members. So in order to create that garage in a proper location on that property, it requires that 5.8-foot variance on the south side of the property. I would state that overall, the FAR is well within the zoning guidelines, .16 is required and .043 is proposed, lot coverage is well within the requirements, 18% coverage is allowed, and we're at 11.1%. And then, you know, with respect to a ranch, you know, heights can be up to 35 feet, two-and-a-half stories, this is a one-story, probably about a 16, 18-foot-high ranch. So from an air and light standpoint, I understand Mr. Sweeney's concern on the, on the south side, but from an air and light standpoint, I believe that this, this property still provides adequate light and air to the adjoining and neighborhood in this area.
And could you briefly address C2 criteria?
You know, as one of the board members mentioned, that the car is going to sit adjacent to the existing house on the south side of the garage, or you can enclose it and, and put it inside the house and have less outdoor storage, so to speak. So I think the benefits of the deviation advance, are advanced in this situation.
And you see some, any substantial detriment either to public good or to the zone plan and zoning ordinance?
No, I do not, and given the fact that we will provide some landscaping on the south side to address the buffering between the neighbor's property and this property.
Thank you, that's all I have for Mr. Steiers.
All right, board questions for Mr. Steiers' planning and engineering testimony? All right, seen none, board professionals?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dave, you mentioned that the existing driveway would not need to be modified in any way?
That's right.
And I just, I just want to confirm, so the driveway slopes down from Carteret towards the house, and then I guess the grade drops off behind the house, correct?
It does, yes.
So by constructing a garage on the left side, are you in any way going to block the flow of water that now kind of makes its way down the driveway to the rear yard, or will that just be swaled, you know, around, around the garage addition?
Yeah, the, the water generally goes south to north, so I think the focus will be to try to get the, and I think what happens with the current situation is, excuse me, the driveway comes down to a point and then goes back up to the existing garage, and we will continue to do that so that the water's not going in the garage, and I think the, generally, we're going to try to get the water to the north, and there'll probably be a little bit of it that will go around to the back of the house as well.
Okay. And just, just as far as, I think you said a net increase of 130 square feet-
Yes.
-of coverage this would result in, so your testimony is no, no negative impact to any of the adjacent properties or downstream properties as a result of that, correct?
Yeah, and given the fact that the swale, you know, as it goes around the house, it, you know, it extends out to the west and away from that neighbor's physical improvements.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Members of the public, questions for Mr. Steiers' planning and engineering testimony? You have a long walk from back there. If we could just get your name and address, please?
Colonel Lindheimer, I'm John's neighbor.
Colonel Lindheimer, I'm John's neighbor on the downhill side. So the only concern I just had was more about, I never saw the plan for it, but we do get water runoff that comes down Carteret. His neighbor on the other side, both driveways, his and the other neighbors, don't have any kind of Belgium block, so the water picks up speed, it hops the curb and goes down the driveways more at a forty-five-degree angle. So right now, I have like a little half-wall between my house and John's to deflect the water to my backyard between us, but the only concern I have is this, if the other garage is there and water comes down, it doesn't have a path back necessarily unless maybe some remediation was done to bank it.
If we could kind of turn your statement into a question and direct it at the witness, and maybe he can give you an answer there, because that was a good question.
As stated, what what? Well, you know, the way the contours work, it appears that the water from the front yard goes around and in between the two houses and towards the west.
And all you guys need to use a mic.
John, can you give him the mic to use if he's up there? Thanks.
There's a swale back in this area here.
I'm sorry, sir. Can you back up to and use the microphone? Thank you.
The way the with the extra drive garage, though, I'm assuming there would be some water that normally would have passed to the backyard between the uphill neighbor's side.
In this area?
Which now would not have the path, which may would increase the flow of water coming across.
This way.
Yeah, but how wide is that? And and it's more of an angle, so I don't see the water flowing back. I see it flowing towards the front of his, and it's still coming around the back between.
So the slight the slight increase where there's no pavement would come around this way?
I can show you video of the water flow, and it's a little river, so it's not like a minor thing. So when the water comes down the driveway, which it will do.
This this water?
Correct. It'll come down.
Yeah, it comes down to a point and then comes around.
But there's also water that's going straight back, too. I mean, just gravity, it's downhill, pitched to all the homes along the road on that side. So with the garage that they built, I'm just asking what's to prevent an increase in the water that's now also going to come along closer to his house and around, joining the water that does cut naturally today around.
Yeah, see, that's what I originally stated. We have about a hundred-and-thirty square feet of increased impervious or, you know, roof compared to grass right now. So there is a slight increase in the runoff from this proposal, and I defer to the board professional as to whether or not he thinks that's significant. I do not think it's a significant amount of runoff. And and again, from from the contours that we've provided on the on the survey, you know, the water does run towards the back. I understand that some of it comes around this and through here.
Also, the neighbors runoff from their driveway.
From this?
You don't have on on your map there.
Yeah, there's a there's a there's a.
Right.
Two-car garage and a pavement paved area that comes down, so that's that's also flowing.
Drops down there, too.
Right.
So I understand that water may have dropped down and also gone past. I just want to make sure that there's not going to be a problem that there's banking or whatever, a little swale, something that will guarantee there won't be an increase in water.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we can look at ways to to try and get the water. Did you say that also that some may be coming down Carteret and through?
It's a bigger issue. It's just a township issue, quite frankly, with the sewer drains and everything. I literally have to go out every storm and go up on all the roads that feed down to Carteret, clean them off myself. Otherwise, I might get water about this deep coming down and about, you know, from here to the table wide. And before my wall, it would come right up to my front door, which was about a foot and a half down, and it would come right up right to the brim.
Right.
So it's pretty significant runoff, so I just want to make absolutely sure that there's a path.
Well, let's.
I can't afford any more water coming.
Oh, I hear you. Bill, on the hundred-and-thirty additional feet, is there something we can do with the plantings while we're doing that? Maybe, you know, incorporate a rain garden or some slight?
Yeah, that's, you know, a couple of things I was going to suggest. The plantings obviously will help. If we could introduce a swale or regrade a little bit of that side yard to make sure the water gets to the rear and not make its way across the front to the to the neighbor's property, that would help. Certainly, a rain garden takes maintenance.
Yep.
But a rain garden would be effective as well. So there's cost-effective things that can be done to help, for sure.
Okay. Mr. Sullivan, you're amenable to that? And I would agree with Bill. I think if you get the swale on that side, on the south side of our property, that would also collect the pavement. There's there's more pavement on this area here because of the turn-in, so it's like thirty-five feet of pavement behind those side-loaded garages. So if we can pick up that that area and force it to the back, I would agree, we can do that.
And anything that can be done that can help divert at least some of that, because right now, a hundred percent of two homes.
Running around the front.
Mine, I have to literally have to buy a.
Yeah. Okay, we can work with that.
And that'd be great.
Putting a swell in there, though, just to clarify, would actually improve the situation that you have today, what Mr. Steiers was saying?
Thank you.
I think there was a comment made from our board engineer on a rain garden. I mean, I think we're talking about a sheet flow here. I'm not quite sure how a rain garden in particular would work where you have sheet flow. Certainly, the swale would certainly be the way to go here.
I missed the first part of the question, but yeah, you know, you could you could certainly take the new garage and put it into a dry well. You could point the swale to the rain garden as well. There's things you can do.
You're going to work with the applicant. You're going to make sure that this situation's improved?
Yeah.
All right. All right, any other members of the public? All right, looks like that's it.
Yeah, so that concludes our presentation in terms of witnesses and evidence. We would ask the board to consider granting this application. We feel that the it proposes an appropriate use of the property on an appropriate scale, and it continues to fit well into this residential neighborhood. The applicant does face several practical hardships which arise essentially from the pre-existing conditions. The lot is undersized in terms of of width in particular, but area as well, and this contributes directly to the need for the sideyard setback variances. As Mr. Steiers pointed out, I think it's important to understand, you know, that we're still well below the coverage requirements and the FAR requirements of the ordinance. We do feel that there are some benefits. It's a rather small home now. It's a single-family ranch. The proposal still results in a relatively modest-sized home. We are creating the second car for the garage that will allow us to take one of the cars out of the driveway and put it into the garage. And there's really no other logical place to put it, given the lot width and the fact that the other side yard is a tighter side yard than this one, and of course, the current location of that garage. We still that we feel that the site can still accommodate the use without any substantial detriments, so we would ask that you consider granting the application, together with the conditions noted and the applicant certainly willing to work on the drainage and the screening issues with the township.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Let's open up to members of the public that would like to speak for or against this application. You could approach and use the microphone. All right, see, now we're going to close that portion. Rich, why don't you take us through the conditions, and we'll open deliberations.
Sure. So if there's a motion to approve the application, that the conditions we discussed were adding a landscape buffer at the property line to the satisfaction of the township planner and providing a grading plan to reduce the water runoff impact to the neighboring properties, that would be to the satisfaction of the township engineer.
All right, thank you.
That was it.
All right, let's open deliberations. Jim, why don't you kick us off there?
Actually, I have no problem with the application. I mean, I drove past and you have your alley out there right now, parked there, and you're just really, like Mr. Bonjour said, you're just really covering that. You're not really adding more space. As long as you take care of the drainage and work with our professionals between that and landscaping, I have no problem with it at all.
Jeff Seacat, good evening, sir.
Hi. Yeah, I have no problems with the application either. I understand the need to want to increase the living space or garage space in this case. I live in the neighborhood. I understand that I had a small ranch myself, and I wanted the need to increase it as well, so I would approve the application.
Mr. Gieske.
Yeah, I believe it improves the situation with the rainwater that's happening today. And again, you know, they're also going to be putting, you won't have to look at that car, right? The garage is getting extended, so now there'll be less to look at over there. And I think, like, it's a narrow, there are very narrow lots over there, and it's difficult to do anything. And I like having my cars in the driveway, in my garage, too, so I'm for it.
Thank you. Mr. Gulak.
Because I would agree. I'd support the application. I think it's consistent with many of the homes I've seen in the neighborhood, exactly the same ranch with a two-car garage, follows the roof line. I think it'd be great for the applicant. I think it'd be good for the neighborhood, and it would improve the stormwater, so I support it.
Thank you. Mr. Bonjour.
I'm in favor of the application. I don't see much of a change happening. I just want to say congratulations on buying an Austin Martin.
Mrs. Amin, your thoughts, please.
It's a very simple application. Only garage is being expanded, so there's not too much here. I'm in favor of approving it.
Mr. Sweeney.
My only concern was with the size of the setback once this proposed garage is built, but it sounds as though the applicant's willing to work with the planner to enhance the vegetative buffer, and I'm also looking at what is essentially a grossly undersized lot, which makes it difficult, if not impossible, to do much of anything at all without violating one standard or another. In short, I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Fresco.
Yeah, I agree with with Mr. Sweeney. I'm not crazy about less than six feet as a setback, but, you know, I think I think we got a great team, and it's going to work out fine, so I support it.
Thank you. Mr. Vecio.
This application's not a sort of clear-cut one, yes or no, for me, because there are hundreds of homes identical to this with very similar lot widths. So, you know, passing this application does set a precedence, and I I'm aware of folks that would would love to do this to their home, like deliver it to one garage. Now, I kind of have to weigh that with, you know, two-car garage, it's not a luxury nowadays, right? I think it's sort of standard living conditions, and kind of looking at, is it better to have cars parked in your garage or or cars parked in your driveway? I think there is a benefit that folks can park their cars in their their garage. This is a very, like I said, typical lot, typical home in this area, could set a precedent, but each does stand on its own merits, but I will I will lean towards favoring this application.
Thank you. I'm in favor. It's a clear hardship case. I actually think this is one of those light rainwater, stormwater situations where a rain garden can pick up a lot of the existing flow. Leaning on Mr. Steiers' planning testimony, he clearly indicated that this was this project was not at a character in the neighborhood, so it's it's a layup. It's an easy yes. And I'll open it up for a motion, please.
I move.
Mr. Wiley, do I have a second? There was a motion to approve, sir?
Yes.
All right. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
I would need a motion to approve this application.
Okay, and a second by Mrs. Amin.
Chairman Fuss.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley.
Yes.
Mrs. Amin.
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney.
Yes.
Mr. Fresco.
Yes.
Mr. Bonjour.
Yes.
Mr. Gieske.
Yes.
All right. Good job, Mr. Sullivan. Good luck with your new car, sir. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and to just add on to Mr. Kirsch's comments from earlier today, having appeared before this board a number of times, I find it to be a very sophisticated and reasonable board, and trust me, you know, I've appeared before, you know, thirty, forty, fifty different boards in the state. So I, for one, I hope you're all back next year.
Thank you, John. Happy holidays to you. Thanks, David. Yeah, thanks. All right, we'll we'll dive in as soon as the last applicant's out of the way. Cafe Amelia, you can come up. We have a court reporter, too, as well, right?
All right. What?
All right, good evening, Ms. Jennings.
For the record, I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Willens, Goldman &amp; Spitzer on behalf of the applicant. As the board, we were here back in July, and the applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval, a D-one variance, a D-four-floor-area ratio variance, several bulk variances and design waivers to construct a new two-story addition to the existing Cafe Amelia restaurant to add a banquet hall, courtyard, enclosed rooftop bar area on property located at 705 Route 202 and 49 Charlotte Drive and identified as Block 163.02, Lots 17 and 9. After the July hearing, in response to the comments that we received from the board and its professionals, the applicant modified the plans to reduce the intensity of the development and to provide safer circulation. Generally, as revised, the proposed restaurant and banquet hall will comprise approximately ten thousand three hundred and thirty-seven square feet, reduced from the original proposal of sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty-nine. To accommodate the reduced building size, a downstairs bar was eliminated, and the banquet room, enclosed rooftop bar, courtyard, kitchen, and banquet room were reduced in size. The proposed seating for the existing restaurant, banquet hall, and rooftop remain the same because the applicant was able to redesign the site to eliminate features such as a dance floor in the banquet room. Additionally, the applicant revised the site circulation to leave the existing depressed curve along Route 202, as is developed today. Access drives to and from Charlotte Drive East and West are still proposed but have been minimally shifted to reduce the amount of impervious coverage and provide additional landscaping. This evening, I'm going to have several witnesses testify. I'm going to start, actually, we have a new site engineer, Robert Michello, who has appeared before this board a number of times. He took a look at the plans for us and came up with some good modifications to help address the concerns expressed by the board and your consultants. He's going to testify first. We have Craig Halishen, the architect. We also have an acoustical engineer, Matt Moriello, who will testify with respect to the noise, Jay Troutman, our traffic engineer, and Andrew Janu, our professional planner. And just as a matter of record-keeping, we are in receipt of eight reports, memos from the town. We have the planning department report dated December 5th, 2025, the board planner report dated November 11th, 2025, board engineering dated December 4th, 2025, health officer dated November 25th, 2025, fire official dated November 21st, 2025, traffic safety dated October 24th, 2025, sewer utility dated October 20th, 25, and tax assessor dated October 10th, 2025. And even though the matter was technically carried without further public notice, we did renotice for the hearing because somebody was missing from the list, so we got an updated list from the town, and we did renotice for this particular hearing.
And I've reviewed that notice. It's in proper form, was mailed within the proper timeframes and republished, so the board does have jurisdiction.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to have Mr. Michello sworn in, and we can begin his testimony.
I have a question. Did you mention that the proposed addition was going to be two stories?
Yes.
Well, and I guess the planning document, it says three stories.
Okay, well, we'll have Mr. Michello clarify everything. Okay, well, we'll have Mr. Moschello clarify everything and the architect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you stand, please, raise your right hand? You're going to ask our professionals to stand? We probably got them at the last first hearing, but why don't we do that again and raise your right hands? I'll swear you in as well. Stand and raise your right hands. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for you, the record, my left to right, just your names, please.
Yes, it's Robert Moschello, M-O-S-C-H-E-L-L-O.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Just for the record, my qualifications, I've been accepted as an expert witness in, before in front of this board on numerous applications. Good evening to all again.
If your license isn't good standing, we'll accept you as an expert.
It still is, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you all as well. All right, so I have a couple of exhibits this evening I'm going to put up for the record. I'm not sure what number we're up to from the last meeting.
I think there should be A4. I think we did A1 through 3 the last time.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Nope, we did A1 through 4. This is A5.
All right, so this will be A5 for the record. I'll just get this up here. So A5 for the record, and I'll mark it, is a neighborhood aerial exhibit. It's dated December 9th, 2025. Just to give some context to the property and the surrounding neighborhood, this is the 2021 state aerials that we're looking at here up on the map, north being up on the screen. Route, Highway 202 going in an east-to-west direction across the plan here. You have the township of Bridgewater where our property is located, and then just to the east, approximately 200 feet to the east, is the municipal boundary line with the borough of Raritan that is, that is shown on the plan here in orange. You can see from the plan that we are in the R20 residential zone, which basically encompasses the properties both to the west, to the south, to the east, and to the north side of the site, which is on the other side of US Highway Route 202. So just to give some context to the properties, which are outlined in yellow, we are known as Block 163.02, Lot 9 and Lot 17. Lot 9 is 0.54 acres and Lot 17 is 0.35 acres, for a total of 0.89 acres. And the property is bounded on the west by Charlotte Drive West and on the east by Charlotte Drive East, and the south by residential properties, and again, the north by Route 202. That's just some context for the overall neighborhood. I'm going to talk about just the next exhibit I have here for the record will be A6. And that's entitled Aerial Exhibit, also dated December 9th, 2025. This is a zoomed-in version of the two properties outlined in yellow, just for context for the record, just to talk about the existing conditions on both properties before we go into the proposed application this evening. Route 202, of course, is still on the top side of the plan here, going in an east-to-west direction, north being up. We have Charlotte Drive West on the west side and Charlotte Drive East on the east side. And you can see both properties outlined in yellow here as I refer to them. Lot 9, which, which we've talked about, which I've referred to as the church lot in terms of the church, existing church that's on that property today that exists out there. It's an existing, just to get on the record here, the size of that building is 1,535 square feet, existing one-story structure. And the lot coverage on that lot with the existing house or building and parking in the rear is approximately 43.9%. Then on the Lot 17, which is known as the Cafe Amelia lot, which is 0.35 acres, the square footage of that existing structure is 2,796 square feet, and the lot coverage on that lot, which was talked about at the last meeting, is actually 96%. And that lot is pretty much developed with the parking and the building that's shown on there. It has access both from Route 202, where there's a drop curve where you can come in off of 202, as well as a drop curve that runs pretty much the entire length of Charlotte Drive East that gives you access to that property. There's approximately 32 parking spaces on that lot, and you notice from looking at the aerial here, there's an outdoor patio area in the back that was added during COVID, and that's used in the summer months and fall and spring months for service back there in terms of outdoor dining. The church lot or Lot 9 has an existing parking lot with about 12 spaces on it. There's an outdoor shed and gravel area towards the back of the property as well. There's some vegetation or landscaping along the southern property line. Most of that vegetation is on the neighboring properties. There's a few existing trees that are right on the property line that border both the Lot 9 and Lot 17. I did go back and take a look at some of the historic aerials for these properties just to get some context as to the development patterns that have occurred out here over the years before we talk about the proposed application. Looking at the Lot 17 site, I went back to aerials as far back as 1979, which showed that this lot was basically developed with the pavement patterns you see out there today and the parking that's shown on there. When I went back further into the early 70s and late 50s, early 70s and mid 60s, it was harder to tell the extents of the pavement on the property, but sometime between approximately 1959 and 1979, this property was built out to the limits you see there today. And actually, when I went back and looked at the aerial mapping for Lot 9, what was pretty interesting was sometime in the 50s and 60s and 70s, there was pavement and access off of Route 202 all along the frontage of this property. And sometime between the late 70s and the 90s, this property was flipped and the parking and pavement was put in the back and landscaping was done in the front. So there's been development patterns that have been occurring over here over the last 50 or so years on these properties, most of which you've seen on Lot 17 has been this way since probably the early 70s, from what I can tell from looking at the aerials. Just to put on the record, there are no environmental constraints on either of these properties as far as wetlands, floodplains, state open waters go. There's no DEP regulated areas that exist here. Both properties are serviced by public utilities, and you know, we'll talk about that when we get to the proposed application as well. But there's no, there's no constraints that exist on the properties or even no steep slopes. The topography on both lots is relatively flat. The total grade change from, I'll say, the northwest to the southeast is about 10 feet, so it's relatively flat in terms of, in terms of sites. And there always no, as of right now, there's no stormwater management on either of those properties. So the runoff from a site perspective just runs off the properties today to the existing road network that's there. There's no controls on any of that runoff that occurs on those, on those properties. Moving on to the proposed application.
Correct.
And this is entitled Site Plan Rendering, and it's dated December 9th, 2025. What I have here is a, is a compilation of my site dimension plan and landscaping plan just for the purposes, and the, and the 2021 state aerial, and I combined these all together for presentation purposes this evening. So it's a series of my plan sheets put together for the purposes of the, of the presentation. So, as Ms. Jennings pointed out, we've actually come and took in a closer look at this property to try to reduce some of the development patterns that were being proposed under the prior application. The prior application had a larger building, approximately 16,000 square foot in size. And this built, this project now, we've reduced the size of the building. We've also reduced the impervious coverage on the property. I'll get into those numbers in a little while. And we've also looked to modify some of the circulation patterns on the property as well to provide some better circulation and also provide for pedestrian connectivity on the property, where I believe before it was, there was some concerns about guests and where they would be parking and walking to the entrances on the building and things of that nature. So we've taken a closer look at, of the design and we've come back and worked with the project architect to reduce the building size and then modify the site layout for what I like to say is a, 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 a better, more efficient layout in terms of site development and providing some more green space on the property as well compared to the prior application. So to get into some of the specifics of the proposed building and some of the dimensions that we're talking about here. The new proposed building is going to be a three-story structure. That was mentioned previously by asking about that. It is a three-story structure, and the architect will show you elevations of what is comprised of the building addition, but the first floor is basically the banquet, the banquet space. The second level is a mezzanine, and the third story is basically the rooftop bar. So it is considered three stories from a zoning perspective, but the overall height of the building complies with your ordinance. It's 29.7 feet. So overall height-wise, it complies, but it is considered a three-story structure. And you'll see those in the elevations when the architect presents that a little later on this evening. But just talking about the, the building addition and how it's situated on the property, the lighter building shown here on my plan is the existing two-story restaurant building that exists on the property today. That building, for all intensive purposes, is not being modified in terms of any, in terms of any expansions towards Route 202 or Charlotte Drive East. The modification or the expansion we're talking about here is the building addition going to the west from the side of that, from the west side of that building towards Charlotte Drive West. We have made some, in modifying the building, we have reduced the building footprint so that the back of the building or the southern side of the building lines up with the existing southern facade of the existing Cafe Amelia building. So that, this building will be no closer to the southern property line as the existing building is today. So that setback that's shown on the plan now is 59.9 feet at the, I'll say, the southeast corner and 60 feet at the southwest corner of that building. It's not exactly perfectly parallel to the lot line, but it's, it's an extension of the existing building. So that building will be no closer than the current building to that southern property line. And then for the west, for the dimension from the western property line, we're now at 79.9 feet, whereas before, the prior building was at 52 feet from that western property line. So we went from 52 feet to 79.9 feet for that western building setback line. And just for context, the southern property line, the building setback was 50.3 feet on the prior plan, and now we're at 59.9 feet, which matches what with the existing building on that southern facade. As far as the northern facade of the building goes, and it's setback dimension to Route 202, I do want to note there's a slight jog in the property lines there, the way the two lot lines are configured, are configured along 202. So the front setback for the existing restaurant is 31.4 feet. That's shown on the plan here. And our setback for the new building addition is 33.2 feet as shown on the plan. So it is set slightly further back, but there was a jog in that lot line. So if you would extend that lot line all the way out, it's actually a few more feet further back, where the prior plan was at 28.9 feet was that original setback on the prior plan. So we've increased that slightly on the plan here. So overall, the building square footages for this application, we went from over 16,000 square feet. We reduced the building down on the first level to 6,557 square feet, on the mezzanine level to 2,550 square feet, and on the rooftop bar, that's at 1,230 square feet. So overall, total floor area for this current application, that was 10,337 square feet, which is a 0.27 FAR ratio for zoning purposes, which is still in excess of your ordinance, but it's been reduced from the prior one, which was 0.43. The other major change that had, that occurred with the reduction in the building footprint was the reduction in lot area. So lot coverage under the prior application was at 88.9%. And for this application, what we've done in terms of the layout here, in terms of being able to get back some impervious coverage was, of course, one, reduce the size of the building. That's certainly helped. To reduce the size of the courtyard in between the existing restaurant and the new building addition, we have some more green space in there now. We've also provided a landscaped area between the western and southern side of the building and the parking areas that weren't on the previous plan. We've also provided for circulation on the property now, sidewalks, not only along the front, which was generally there already, but we've also provided sidewalks on the western side and eastern side of the plan to provide access to the parking areas for, for those days when we're not going to be having valet on site and people will be parking their own vehicles on the property. And we have those sidewalks to allow for that pedestrian circulation basically around the entire property now to get from the parking areas to the front of the building. And then we provided some additional green space areas and some landscaped islands around the property as well. We also took the, the proposed parking that was on the southern side of the site. The prior plan had it about eight feet from the property line. We moved it to 10 feet from the property line to give an extra, extra two feet of, of area where we're providing landscape buffering along that southern property line there and enhancing the screening that's along that property line with the residences. I'll talk about that a little bit more later on. But with all these modifications, we're also providing a 24-foot drive lane, both on the southern portion of the parking lot, a 24-foot drive lane on the western side. And we're doing an 18-foot drive lane, one-way drive lane on the northern side. These are two-way on the southern and western side. But an 18-foot wide drive lane on the northern side, one-way for, for traffic circulation purposes, and providing a six-foot stabilized turf area for emergency vehicles if they need that for, for fire truck circulation. And I'll show you a circulation plan a little later on for fire trucks where that's not necessarily needed, but to comply with the request of your fire official to have 24-foot circulation around the entire site. We're providing that stabilized turf for a fire truck if they need it. We've used stabilized turf on a number of projects throughout Bridgewater. It's been accepted in the past for fire truck access, and we feel that's, that's, that's a suitable area here instead of baking, instead of dealing with adding impervious within the DOT right-of-way where none exists today. We feel that doing stabilized turf there would, would, you know, certainly work for a fire truck access in that area. And then we're going to, we're going to keep the existing pavement in front of the building that's there now and just have the ADA parking spaces in front of the existing restaurant, where now there's about seven or eight parking spaces out there today that are used by regular patrons. We're going to make those the ADA spaces and keep the existing pavement that's in front there for, for circulation purposes. But this allows for full circulation around the site, both by fire trucks and as well as delivery trucks on site. There were some comments in the review letters about deliveries and how that was going to be accomplished. We do still have a loading area on the southern side of the building, and that loading area is about 7 by 18. It's a concrete pad adjacent to one of the access doors on the building. It's part of the 24-foot drive lane that's on the southern side of the site. Given the way the site's going to operate, the type of vehicles we anticipate for loading, which are typically going to be smaller box trucks and vans, we don't anticipate a large tractor-trailer type of deliveries for a restaurant like this. We anticipate, we have more than adequate room here for loading purposes for deliveries to the building. Most deliveries for a, a site like this occur during the week, usually between 3, usually between 9 o'clock and 3 o'clock. They don't deliver in the evening hours when the restaurant is typically, you know, operating. So that's usually during the day that those deliveries take place. We feel there's adequate circulation on site to allow that to happen for those few minutes that those deliveries occur for each of those different types of, of delivery trucks that come to the site. As far as trash refuse and garbage pickup goes, we are proposing an 18 by 18 trash enclosure on the southern portion of the site. This is generally where it was on the prior plan. That will be a concrete enclosed or masonry-enclosed trash enclosure, six-foot-high walls with gates on the front of it, which will be able to house dumpsters for both regular trash and recycling. And again, from a search, a site circulation standpoint, garbage trucks will be able to access the site from Charlotte Drive or from Charlotte Drive West, east or west, they can come into the site. They'll be able to access the trash enclosure to pick up the dumpsters and, you know, have trash pickup on, on site. And that'll be, the architect can talk about this a little bit more, but that'll be as needed for trash pickup on site. It could be three times a week, it could be four times a week, depending on how often it's, it's going to be, it's going to be needed. I know there were some concerns at the last meeting about trash, where it was stored on site, times it was being picked up, and, and this trash enclosure will allow for it to be in an enclosed space, typical to what you would have on other sites throughout Bridgewater.
Mr. Moschello, excuse me, you, you went into some length about the reduced size of the current proposal versus the original proposal. What's been done in terms of the number of seats proposed for the new facility versus the old?
As far as the seats go, it's still the same number of, of seats. It's going to be 50 in the restaurant. The, the restaurant will be reduced from, I think it's 72 right now, it's going down to 50 in the restaurant, 80 in the banquet facility, and then 30 on the rooftop bar. So it's still going to be 180 seats, and the architect will show you on the plans how that's, that's laid out in terms of the buildings, but the seat count's going to remain the same.
So in terms of the number of people who may be coming to the site, even though the size you're proposing now is considerably smaller than originally proposed, likely to be the same number of people coming to the site, whether it's for the banquet hall or for the restaurant or for the outdoor, the bar that's going to be on top is... or for the restaurant or for the outdoor, the bar that's going to be on top, is that correct?
That is correct. And if you look at the parking calculations on the plans, the calculations based on your ordinance requires 51 parking spaces based on 180 seats in the venue. That includes the restaurant, the banquet space, and the rooftop bar. So we have 51 spaces are required, and then we have 51 spaces proposed. As a matter of fact, it's actually, because of the state electric vehicle credit, the number of required spaces is actually reduced by five to 46, but we're still proposing 51 parking spaces on site that meets the ordinance requirements for parking.
Okay. So in terms of the reduced size of this current proposal, how does that compare with anything else in this neighborhood? Bigger, smaller, the same?
You're asking to compare a restaurant and banquet to a residential house? I mean, that's two completely different things we're talking about here. I mean, it's different in terms of size. Of course, one structure is, the overall structure is 10,000 square feet. That's larger than any existing home adjacent to it.
So it's considerably, it would be considerably larger than anything else in the immediate neighborhood, which suggests to me that might not fit in all that well. Is that right?
I will say this. I mean, you say immediate neighborhood. I mean, again, looking at some of the surrounding area, there are some larger buildings across the street on Route 202, that's an existing commercial building.
Let's limit ourselves to Charlotte Drive, okay? Because that's really the immediate neighborhood that we're concerned with.
But yes, going back to Charlotte Drive, it is larger than the existing homes around it, yes.
Thank you.
So to continue on the context of reduction of the project's size, lot coverage was another one that was originally at 88.9% with these modifications that we've proposing, some additional green space on site, reduction of the building, and some modifications to the parking layouts, we're now at 79.4% lot coverage. So we reduced it by almost 10% from where we were previously to where we are now, which was a reduction of almost 4,000, a little over 4,000 square feet of lot area on the site to take it down to 79.4%.
And how does that compare with what's permitted in this zone?
The permitted in the zone is, I believe, one second. Thank you, 25%. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't speaking out of...
So permitted is 25. You're proposing almost 80% lot coverage. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And just for some context, the existing, when you take both of the existing restaurant site and the existing, I'll call it church site for all intensive purposes, and you look at the comparison of the lot coverage on those two lots together, that's 64.4% for just those two by themselves. So yes, we're going from 64.4% up to 79.4% for this particular application.
I go back to the parking numbers that you had mentioned, 51, 48, 88, 48 standard spots, 380A, 180 seats total. I just want to kind of think from more of a just realistic, practical perspective here. I mean, I know the code sort of layout minimums, and would you agree there are instances where minimums are not sufficient for a design, that you would have to go above sort of code-prescribed minimums or ordinances to suit a certain project?
In certain instances, that might be the case. Again, with parking, and I'm going to defer some of this to the traffic engineer, because parking calculations, you know, sometimes go hand-in-hand with traffic. So again, we're designing to what the ordinance standard says it would need to be for traffic. It could be considered a minimum possibly, but again, it says what, if I have 180 seats and I base it on your ordinance calculation of .7 per 2.5 seats, I need 51, you know, on the property.
All right. I'm just kind of thinking from a sort of just a practical perspective. This is a busy restaurant. You have 50 seats in a restaurant. Let's take a Saturday night. They're pretty busy on Saturday night. Then you also have people arriving for maybe reservations. Are they going to fill the banquet hall with an event on a Saturday evening?
Well, again, if business is good, you would hope that, yes, you'll have a 50-seat restaurant operating, which typically in a restaurant, you're going to have, for a size like that, your restaurant is going to go from basically probably 6 to 9, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM is going to be your busy times on the restaurant. So you're going to have probably, you know, one main turnover of those seats at that time, probably around 7:30 or so, depending on your reservations. And yes, you could have the banquet facility, which could have up to 80 seats, but that could be slightly different in terms of its operating time. The banquet facility is going to be one event in the evening. You're not going to have two events in the banquet facility, so that's going to operate slightly different from the restaurant time.
I mean, 6 to 10 would be if I'm going to...
It could be. So those people arriving before the restaurant are right around the same time that it's occurring. So on those busy nights, so let's say it's a Friday or Saturday night where you're going to have that, the intent is to have valet service manage the cars on site. You have to do that when you have this type of space here and the way it's going to operate, because you want to be able to control your patrons, how they come into the site, you know, take the cars, the valets could control that and park them on the site accordingly. So that's how we anticipate this operating, which is why we made this a one-way road. And we have the entrance over here, which is basically split between the restaurant and the banquet facility, where you could have a couple cars stacked here for people dropping off. The valets can then go and park them, you know, as needed as the event starts up, separate from the restaurant.
Right. So, I mean, it is reasonable to assume that this facility could be operating near its capacity on Friday evenings, Saturday evenings, busy times. I mean, you also have the employees as well. You have employees, you have the restaurant, you have the banquet hall. So those are numbers. I'm not sure exactly how you would staff a restaurant in terms of numbers, but I'm thinking in the 20, 30 range of employees. And then you have 50 spots, right? So with employees, it could be over 200 people. So you're almost saying, like, everyone would have to come in a car of four people to have parking spots within this facility?
Not necessarily. I mean, it all depends on how that's going to work out in terms of how people are coming to events, you know, or to a restaurant to come out to eat. The parking numbers, and I'll defer some of this to our traffic engineer as well, do take into account employees as well. When you think about that .7 space per 2.5 seats, it does have a certain baseline for some employees that are in there. Now, in the restaurant business such as this, the way this site's operated and the way the applicant's going to continue to operate it really has to do with how they bring those employees to the site. The way it was explained to us in terms of operation is, there's, some employees will carpool, you know, certain staff does that, certain employees will drive themselves, and certain employees use car services to get there. So you're not always going to have, let's say you've got 10 employees that are operating at the site, you know, on a given day, you're not going to have 10 cars that are going to show up there for them to come to work. That's not typically the way it operates.
So you mentioned valet. Where would they valet the cars to?
Well, the valets would use the typical spaces that are striped on site. And to be fair to valets too, they can, you know, if they're parking cars and they control the cars, they can usually, you know, park them a little tighter than what the lines show on a plan, as opposed to your typical nine-foot-wide spaces for normal parking during regular times of the week. Valets can control that and they can park, fit a couple more cars on site. We're going to have employee parking that's going to be over here, which, again, we can, you know, valets can utilize fitting some additional cars where they feel like they can on site. Again, the intent is that we have the 51 spaces to meet the ordinance requirement of the 51 that the ordinance says we need on site.
Point of information, do you plan on having a backup site in case you run out of spots? You have another, you know, plan B?
Let me get back to the board on that one, about that. Just let me check on my client, and I'll get back to you to answer that question.
I have a question for Ms. Jennings on this line of questioning. This board approved to the site to the east. I guess it's a limo operation. I understood it's the same owners. Why is this restaurant never utilize that square footage for parking?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Are you going to have an operational witness that's going to testify to the number of employees, that they're going to be carpooling and taking car services? I think that would be helpful for the board.
I think Rob was going to cover that in his testimony. He did touch on it already.
I mean, yes, I mean...
But he's not really qualified as a restaurant operator. He's an engineer.
He's a very good engineer, but as far as his restaurant testimony, I'm not sure I'm buying it, Rob.
I'll defer to the architect on that.
The architect said he can handle it. He designed the restaurant, and that's what he does.
Well, things like garbage pickup, you know, those are things that an operator could fill us in on, you know, because there are neighbors and, you know, we certainly have had other restaurants in residential neighborhoods. We'd like to qualify that. We'd like to have, you know, a time of day that that garbage is going to be picked up. Hopefully, it's not 3:00 or 2:00 in the morning. Those are things that an operator could testify and give some clarity. There's a lot of people in the audience that I bet would like to hear as well. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. The parking spaces that are on the east side of the building, the existing building, they're so close to the Charlotte Street or Drive. When they have to come out of that space, do they go into the street? What will happen there?
Well, those spaces that are to the east, we have seven there now. There's actually eight spaces there today. They've been there for almost over 50 years that they've been in operation, those parking spaces. We do want, we are going to call them employee parking spaces, so that this way, employees would park there before they come into work and they'd be there for the duration of their shift. So they wouldn't be, people wouldn't be coming in and out of them as often as, let's say, they're being used today by guests coming and going from the restaurant. So that's the intent of those spaces. And if we don't need all the employee spaces there, then we can use them for valet spaces as well, if we don't have seven cars for the employees there at that particular time.
You think you're only going to have 10 employees in a catering hall and a restaurant and a bar area?
I use 10 as an example. I'll defer to the architect.
And a kitchen?
The exact number. He has the exact number for what the employees are going to be.
Thank you.
Another question I have is, you know, people who work there, will they be allowed to park at all over there, or they will be asked to park someplace else and then...
The intent was to use these couple spaces, these seven spaces for employee parking, yes. So continuing along, we talked about lot coverage. We talked about building size. I talked about site circulation and parking spaces. We talked about valet operation on site. I mentioned the trash enclosure that we have on the property. I do want to just talk about site grading. Again, the site's relatively flat. It was only a 10-foot grade change across the site. There's no retaining walls proposed here, so the grades are relatively, I'll say, flat, as I mentioned already. Utilities, both buildings are serviced by public utilities. It's the intent that since we're expanding from the existing building, we'll tie in our utilities from that building for water, sewer, electric, et cetera. If there's any upgrades needed, we'll work with the township's professionals to deal with that. I know there was some comments about this from the sewer coordinator about coordinating a connection and some permitting, which we'll certainly address should the board act favorably upon the application. I do want to touch on stormwater management for the application. This project is not considered major development under the stormwater rule. It's not a quarter acre of new impervious or an acre of disturbance, but we are proposing a stormwater management system. Mr. Burr had reviewed that system. He had some comments in his review letter about how that system would operate and function, and he asked if we can make some modifications to the calculations to show that we're going to maintain the existing rates of runoff coming off the property today, which we will. It's going to connect into the existing stormwater system in Charlotte Drive East. And I know there were some comments in his letter about the inlets maybe having been filled with some sediment, which we can certainly look to help address and clean up if the application were to be approved. But the intent would be to put a new stormwater management system in place that would reduce and mitigate runoff from the site to deal with the increase in impervious surfaces that we are proposing on this property, given that there's no controls on stormwater today. That would certainly be an enhancement over what's there under current conditions. There is an existing sign proposed on the application. There's an existing sign out there now, but there is a new one that's proposed. We're going to put it in the proposed island right in front of the building here. It's going to be set back further from the road than where the current one is today. It'll be set back about 13 feet from the property line, as opposed to the 5.2 where the existing sign is today. And then lastly, to talk about, actually, two additional topics, landscaping. We are proposing landscaping on this project. There's a series of street trees and shrubs and screening trees or evergreens that we're proposing here. As you can see from the rendering, we've got a pretty thick line of cypress, leland shrubbery along the, or evergreen-type shrubbery along the southern property line. I know there was some comments in the review letters about how that was being addressed in terms of the landscaping and a proposed fence. Right now, there's an existing wooden fence that runs basically between the existing parking lot and the property line that's on the Cafe Amelia side, and then it kind of continues onto the church lot and kind of stops. Our intent is to build or construct a new six-foot-high solid PVC fence that'll provide screening between this property and the southern residential properties. We had attempted to show that fence about halfway between the property line and the curb line, and then show the landscaping between the fence and the property line. So what we were trying to do there was keep the landscaping as tight to the property line as we could and provide a fence about halfway between the parking lot and the property line. I know there were some comments in Mr. Burr's letter and Ms. Sarmon's letter about how that was really going to be, I'll say, done in the field. So I think it really comes down to, I guess, perception of what one would want to see along a property line. Would you rather have the fence right along the property line between us and the southern residents and the residences, and then put the landscaping behind the fence? Or would it be better to take that fence and move it closer to the parking spaces, maybe a foot or two off the parking spaces themselves, and then have about an eight-foot area of landscaping where that shrubbery can grow up, you know, over time as well? So again, we're open to, I think either way is suitable in this case, would just be, I guess, preference of the board and if there's any input from the residences on what may be better in that situation in terms of where that fence would be located. So we did...
While you're talking about the fence or the landscaping, you said the, stop it there, the garbage thing is, that's going to be 18 by 18?
That's 18 by 18, yes.
Now, me as a neighbor, if you were a neighbor there, with the landscaping and all that put up or a fence, is that 18 by 18 garbage going to look annoying to them from their house? Or can it be moved somewhere else?
It's, you're really, if you're going to have a six-foot-high fence and the trash area is going to have actually a six-foot masonry wall around it, you're really not going to see what's inside of it.
Closest to the closest house, though?
The closest house? It's actually in the middle. The houses are to the southeast and southwest. If I had to estimate, probably about 75, 80 feet from the closest structure.
Probably the best location.
Right in the middle is probably the best. If I moved it to one side or the other, it's going to be closer to one of those structures.
It's hard to tell from the diagram exactly.
Yeah, there's one house here and there's another house structure here.
Optically, that is good, but what about smell?
It's a trash enclosure. It doesn't have a roof on it, but it does have masonry walls around it, so it will have some containment. And there's going to be dumpsters in there. So it's not just going to be trash placed on the ground. There's going to be dumpsters for both recycling and refuse waste, which will have lids on them.
So we could get an operator to testify that maybe they could increase their pickups that would reduce the smell?
Sure.
That's something that maybe we could get that information from, right? Because, Rob, you're not an expert on that.
Not on the trash pickup. But yes, the dumpsters will have lids on them, so that this way you'll have that opportunity. If the operator talks about number of pickups, that could reduce that. But yes, we tried to center it on the site.
Now, it's going to be the same. You have two dumpsters now.
I don't remember if there's two out there right now. Yes.
They're on the church property.
Yes, they are. Yes. They'll be enclosed in a masonry enclosure as opposed to being out in the open.
Mr. Michelle, you mentioned a PVC fence along the southern property line. What color?
We can say white, but it could be beige, it could be tan. We can do any color.
You're flexible as far as color.
Yeah, I think we're flexible as far as color goes, yes.
I'm against white.
You what?
I don't like white.
Can I defer the color to the architect, because I'm not the color person?
Let's hear what the audience has to say.
So based upon, you know, that fencing and screening there, we can certainly make some adjustments to that. We are then also proposing shrubbery around the building. We've got shrubs on the western side, shrubs on the southern side. We've got pockets of shrubbery in the landscaped areas on the north as well as on the east, and then of course along the frontage of Charlotte Drive West as well. And then we also show shade trees on the plan, both on Charlotte Drive East and West and on some of the islands. I do want to point out that we did have some shade trees in the DOT right-of- I do want to point out that we did have some shade trees in the DOT right-of-way. I'm going to say that if there's, if we get a letter of no interest from the DOT, that those trees can remain, but if not, then we'd have to remove those four trees in the DOT right-of-way and probably try to adjust somewhere else on site to make up for having to move those.
Mr. Michello, I'm going to hop in here. It's 8:50. We've been going since 7:00. If you don't mind, maybe a 10-minute break?
I would actually appreciate that.
All right, so we'll come back, we'll start up again at 9 o'clock. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Jennings, for the break.
So we're going to continue with Mr. Michello?
Great, thank you very much. I just want to pick up where I left off in talking about landscaping, still referring to Exhibit A7 for the record. Just to go through some of the landscaping numbers for the project, we are proposing, actually, just to go through your categories, tree plantings required per disturbed lot area are 25 trees and we're proposing 25 trees to satisfy that requirement. Parking lot landscaping required is, per space, is five trees and 27 trees are proposed, so we meet that requirement. Transition buffer plantings, which is the planting along Route 202 frontage, where 69 shrubs are required, and we only have 28 shrubs along the Route 202 frontage generally in the landscaped areas in the front of the building. We are not proposing any shrub plantings in the Route 202 right-of-way. And then foundation shrub plantings calls for 167 shrubs for the project, and that's around the entire, that's supposed to be around the entire foundation of both the proposed and the existing building. But given where we have walkways and such and access to the building and parking, we only have 76 shrubs are proposed. And then, and then we, again, that's the five categories or four categories of plantings that are required per your ordinance. And then I do want to, again, point out that we have that, you know, 37 evergreen trees along the southern property line, which, based upon the layout of the fencing and where that fence ultimately gets located, and even the height of the fence. The fence is six feet, which complies with your ordinance, but if the board feels that we can increase the height of that fence to seven or eight feet, which we have done on other projects for screening purposes at the discretion of the board, we could increase the height of that fence as well. The fence on the southern property line between our development and those two residential neighbors.
Thank you.
You're welcome. In terms of the project's lighting, it's pretty straightforward. We have a lighting plan that was submitted. There's eight new pole-mounted lights, two along the southern property line, basically one for each parking area with house-size shields so that we can illuminate in towards the property and not have any lighting come out and leave the property towards those residential lots. We meet the lighting levels per your ordinance. I do want to point out that on the plans, it said the lighting was going to be turned off a half hour after closing. Typically, in a restaurant environment, and our architect can confirm this, we'd like to leave the lighting on for one hour after closing, just so that the employees have a chance to clean up and then be able to, you know, leave the site as well. So we'd like that to be one hour instead of a half hour, because the plans did say a half hour. And then, lastly, I'd like to just go through the list of variances and design waivers that are being requested on this application for the record. So, starting with the variances, and these are in no particular order, but I'll go down the list accordingly, starting with the use variances, which are being requested from Section 126-307, where the R20 zone does not principally permit restaurants and banquet hall uses, where restaurant use is proposed on Lot 9. And then a use variance is being requested from 126-307, where again, the R20 zone does not permit restaurant or banquet use, where the expansion of the existing restaurant use is being proposed on Lot 17. So Lot 17 is the existing Cafe Amelia lot. Lot 9 is the church lot. And then we have the variances being requested from Section 126-313, 126 Attachment 1, which is Schedule 1, where the maximum improved lot coverage for the R20 zone is 25 percent, and the application as it stands now is at 79.4 percent proposed. And a variance is being requested from Section 126-313, 126 Attachment 1, Schedule 1, where the maximum floor area ratio permitted in the R20 zone is 0.16, and this application is requesting 0.27 as the FAR. And a variance is being requested from Section 126-313, again, 126 Attachment 1, Schedule 1, where the minimum front yard setback for the R20 zone is required to be 50 feet. And we have 24.6 is provided for the setback along Charlotte Drive East. That's an existing, that's an existing non-conforming condition that we're not, or pre-existing non-conforming condition that we're not proposing to change at this time, but it is still, we're calling it out as a variance. Then a variance is being requested from Section 126-313, 126 Attachment 1, Schedule 1, where the minimum rear yard setback for the R20 zone is required to be 20 feet for an accessory structure, and we're proposing 9.7 feet is being provided for the proposed trash enclosure, which is technically an accessory structure. Then a variance is being requested from Section 126-313, 126 Attachment 1, Schedule 1, where the maximum number of stories for the R20 zone is permitted to be two and a half stories for a structure, and we are proposing three stories. However, the building height does comply with the required 35-foot maximum at 29.7 feet. So it's just the number of stories that is a deviation from the ordinance. And a variance is being requested from Section 126-171.1, where a minimum front yard building setback from Route 202 is required to be 200 feet, and 33.2 foot is proposed for the building addition. Then a variance is being requested from Section 126- Then a variance is being requested from Section 126-171.1, where a minimum parking setback from Route 202 is required to be 100 feet. And we have 4.4 feet is proposed. And I just want to point that out on the plan, so the board is aware of where this is. It's the top corner, the northeast, northwest corner of the plan here, where that parking setback is at 4.4 feet from the, from the 202 right-of-way line. And then a variance is being requested from Section 126-181D, where a minimum parking setback from any property line is required to be 10 feet. And three feet is proposed from Lot 9 property line that runs parallel to Charlotte Drive East. That's down here in the lower right-hand corner of the plan here. This is, this proposed space adjacent to the eastern property line. I should note that, under the existing conditions, in that particular spot right there, the existing parking is actually within the Charlotte Drive East right-of-way. So we're actually moving it out of the right-of-way and making it at least be wholly contained on the applicant's property, and it's not no longer in the right-of-way. There's also six design waivers that we are requesting as part of this application. I'll run through those really quick. Design waivers being requested from Section 126-168, where the minimum parking stall size is required to be nine and a half by 18. And we're proposing nine by 18 for parking stall sizes. Design waivers being requested from Section 126-I77B, where the minimum number of loading spaces is required to be two. And essentially here, we're proposing one loading space for the building. And then a design waiver is being requested from Section 126-I77B, where the minimum size of a loading space is required to be 12 by 50 feet. Essentially, we're counting the area of the concrete adjacent to the loading space as seven and a half, 7.7 by 18, as the loading space size. But again, we, as I mentioned in my testimony, there's ample room within the parking area for having a truck parked for delivery purposes. But again, the size of the space is not solely dedicated for loading purposes. That meets the 12 by 50 requirement. Then we have two waivers for landscaping purposes. One from Section 120-191D1A, where the front yard landscaping along Route 202 corridor shall require a minimum of eight shrubs for every 30 feet of frontage, where the 69, where we have 69 shrubs are required, and 28 shrubs are proposed, as I mentioned previously. And then a design waiver from Section 120-191C5, where 10 shrubs per 20 linear feet of foundation is required, where 167 shrubs will be required for the entire building, and we are proposing 76 on this application. And then the last design waiver from Section 126-19511A, where the minimum sign distance from any street right-of-way for a sign with an area of 25 square feet or less is required to be 20 feet. And we're proposing 13 in this, for this application. So that concludes the, my direct testimony, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, if you could just touch on outside agency approvals.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With those.
Yes, thank you for that, Ms. Jennings. There are three outside agency approvals that are required. Somerset County Planning Board approval, which was actually received. But since we've modified the site layout, we're gonna have to resubmit to the county for an updated approval. Somerset Union Soil Conservation District, where over 5,000 square feet of disturbance, we'll need to submit to them, and we would take care of that, you know, as a condition of an approval for the application. And then we have, we will need a letter of no interest from the NJDOT for the access from the site that we're proposing here, that we're actually not changing the access for, for the property. And I believe that has been submitted, Ms. Jennings, I just.
I believe so.
It has been submitted, so we're waiting on receiving that from the state. There was a comment in one of the review letters about, I think it was from the sewer engineer, about possibly needing SRVSA approval for connections, which, if that's the case, we'll, we can address that as part of a condition of any approval if the board were to grant approval for that as well.
And are the, you had an opportunity to review all the review letters and memos issued by the board's consultants?
I, I did. In regards to the engineering comments in the, in the memos, both Mr. Burr's letter, Ms. Saruman's letter, the fire official's letter, I, I don't have any objections to complying with their, with their questions as it relates to, to engineering comments, subject to whatever landscaping adjustments we may make along that southern property line, and the fencing that may go along with that as well.
Thank you. That's all the direct questions for this witness.
There was something about health for food preparation and such?
I'll defer that one to the, to the project architect, since he's dealing with the kitchen aspects of the building, so.
Okay.
I have a couple, a question on the proposed driveways to access the parking lot here. I see you have access from Charlotte Drive, and then also from, actually, east and west, Charlotte Drive East and West. Did you look at introducing sort of a driveway access only from Route 202 to serve this facility?
We did not look at restricting access only from, from 202. We, we felt that having the access points from both east and west, you know, provides for some, some more efficient circulation for deliveries and being able to move around the site. Fire, fire truck access as well, and then also allowing folks to, to come in. You know, again, if you're a, I'll say, a patron who might come to the site multiple times, you might use the west road to enter into the site. Whereas if you're coming for the first time, you might use the east drive to come in and loop around into, into the site. So we felt having the multiple access points was, makes for more efficient access around the, around the property.
Because the address for this facility would be Route 202?
The access would actually be the way we anticipated.
I'm sorry, the address would be 202?
Address would be 202, yes.
Right, so the, there would be no, well, there is an existing area. My other question, so we're leaving, like, where the existing Cafe Amelia is, we're really leaving that site in its sort of existing condition with kind of the asphalt just going right to the curb line, drop curb all the way.
Yes.
We're really redeveloping this entire lot, though. I mean, is it worth looking at, like, the, a lot, you know, holistically, to see if there's any kind of further development that can be, you know, improvements that can be done? Because it's, it's not just sort of a simple addition here. You're really transforming this site.
And we are, and we have looked at not only the access from, you know, what's happening in the front here of the building, which is why we put the handicap spaces here as opposed to having the seven or eight existing spaces that were there today. There still is access. We want to keep the access off of 202, and that's there. But really, that, that, that's kind of more secondary to where we're gonna feel that people are gonna come down either Charlotte Drive East and circle through the site, or they'll come down Charlotte Drive West and come into the site that way to get to the front for the valets when we have a busy weekend, or just being able to come into the site and park when we're not using valet service during, you know, other days of, of the week. But by taking out those seven or eight spaces here, we reduce activity right in front of the, right in front of the building, while also, you know, reconfiguring the, the access around the site.
So, going back to my first question, there's, you don't think there's any sort of benefit to looking at a sort of singular Y driveway from 202 here and removing east and west access points?
No, I, I think, in this situation, I don't think so, because you have, this gives more flexibility for vehicles to move around the site. If we were to put a single access point in off of, off of 202, and I'd have to defer to the traffic engineer on what that might even allow in terms of the access code, because there's an existing point now, and you've got two, you know, public roads on either side of it. So I think the traffic engineer might weigh in differently on that. But I, but having the access points coming off of those side streets provides for, I think, better circulation around the property.
Okay. My last question is on Charlotte Drive East and West. Is it possible to sign a public street to prevent business parking?
That would be a council issue.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, I will say this, it, it, there was some comments in the review letters. I, I wanted to bring this up during my direct testimony. And since you're asking about access, it's a, it's a good point. We can put at both Charlotte Drive West and Charlotte Drive East, we can put up some directional signage to, you know, tell patrons if they're leaving the site, if it's not in a valet condition, because valets would be on Friday or Saturday nights when it's busy. But during other times, we can put signage that would, you know, direct people, if I'm leaving Charlotte Drive East, right turn, I mean, left turn to go out to 202. If I'm leaving Charlotte Drive West, make a right turn to go out to 202. We could put signage there to direct people back to 202 and allow them to, to make that turn. You know, that's certainly something we can add as directional signage on, on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Michel, the one thing that strikes me about the proposal, or one of the things that strikes me about the proposal, is that it's big. And it's quite a bit bigger than the existing restaurant. And you're also proposing to violate all of, or not, maybe not all, but many of the setbacks that you're required to meet. What is this gonna look like to the neighbors immediately adjacent to this property?
I, I think visually, if you're on the south, we're proposing some, some landscaping there, fencing. And those, those evergreen trees in a couple of years are gonna grow up to be in the 12 to 15-foot range. So it's gonna certainly, you know, there's gonna be a buffer on the south side of the property. That building is no closer to the south property line than the existing building is today, in terms of, in terms of distance. So I, I think from a southern perspective, the impact is, is no different than the existing building that's there now. And with the additional landscaping and enhancements we're talking about, I think that's gonna, you know, help that mitigate that, that view, you know, from, from the south. From, from the west, you're moving the building further away from the street than what's there today. The existing how, the existing church building that is closer to the street, we're moving us, we're moving further away from that now. So we're actually getting further away from Charlotte Drive West with, with this application.
But that's also gonna be a building that's considerably bigger than the existing church building, correct?
It, it will be a two, well, we'll call it a three-story building for, because that's what the application says it is. But the way this building's designed, and I will defer to the architect to answer this, it, the activities are contained within the building. The rooftop bar has also been modified now that, and you'll see this on the architecturals, that the walls on the south side and the west side are solid, so that anyone who's to the south or west really won't be able to see any activity going on on the, on the side of the building, on the top of the roof of the building. And the architect will show you that in the elevations.
And on the east side of Charlotte?
The east side, this build, this side of, this side of the building is remaining unchanged.
Okay. Would it be possible to put together a rendering that shows from various sites in close proximity to your proposal what it looks like?
Yes, we can do that, yes.
Good, thank you.
I have a question about the bar and the roof. I'm assuming that this is gonna be for aesthetic purposes, that you're gonna also want to have live music on the weekends? I know you haven't said that yet, but that's my guess. And how would you mitigate sound and, you know, disturbing people with that?
Do you have an acoustical engineer who will testify?
Can't hear you.
We have an acoustical engineer who will testify to noise concerns.
Okay.
Can you talk about the, you call it a structural stabilizing ground for the fire trucks? Let's make sure that the fire marshal's gonna be all right with this. I know you reworked the entire plan, and I know he had some concerns about the previous plan. Just put some stuff on the record about how this is gonna be good for the fire department to get circulation on the site.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. So one of the comments was, he was, he want, you're a town fire official, and it's, you know, requires 24-foot wide fire lanes throughout the site. So we have certainly provided that on the south and on the west. On the north driveline, we have 18-foot of pavement. And what I'm proposing to do is add six feet of stabilized turf, just going into the DOT right-of-way, which is still gonna look like grass from any other person's perspective. But that stabilized turf is supported with a honeycomb plastic structure that a fire truck can drive on. We did this on multiple other projects throughout Bridgewater. I know the fire official's familiar with it. You, and it's not something you drive on every day. It's just used for when that fire truck needs that extra little bit of space to maneuver. We make, we've actually done full fire lanes where you don't have vehicle access out of this material, and it supports the weight of a fire truck.
We used this on a storage project off of Bosso Lane, where they had an entire strip, and it's.
You might have. And we're looking at that for another storage.
The fire marshal's okay with this? This is approved, and it can, the equipment that's in that firehouse is gonna be okay to?
It can support 80,000 pounds of, of weight. And I actually used it on the, the LCS project in Bridge, right over here in Bridgewater off, off Frontier Road.
Yep.
For a fire lane as well, and it was accepted.
All right, and that was what, 2019, 2020?
Yes, it was before Mr. Scolara, but I've talked to him before. It was, it was his predecessor, but I've had conversations with him about using it on current.
This isn't new technology. This is established, and it's, it's certified, and the fire marshal's okay with it.
This has been around for many years now.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other board questions? All right, board professionals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question related to that. Is there any kind of special maintenance that would be required that the fire, like, if it became overgrown with grass or anything? Is there anything that it needs to be specifically maintained so that you can, the fire department will be able to know that it's there? So that they, if they did enter the site, they knew that they could, they could hop on that?
You, you could, when you get up close to it, you could see the, the honeycomb on it. But if there's a concern about being able to see it, we might be able to do some, and I've done this before, with just some ground markers to just designate the six-foot width. But it's, it's mowed like, just, it's mowed like the regular grass. So any maintenance person that's mowing the lawn would just mow it as part of mowing the grass. They wouldn't even, they probably wouldn't even know the difference.
Okay, thank you. As far as, you'd mentioned that the, you know, the parking requirement is essentially reduced from our ordinance requirement because of the EV space reduction that's permitted. There is a impervious or improved lot coverage variance that's being sought. But if those additional five spaces were, were removed, would that have an impact on the, on the coverage?
There are 180 square foot of space. You would, you know, lose, you know, probably 1,000 square feet. It would bring the number down a, a, I don't know the exact percentage point, but it would be 1,000 square feet less. So probably two and a half basis points of coverage would, would be just a rough calculation.
And would that have any impact on the potential layout of the site or anything? Where those spaces would be removed, or where it could add to, you know, better circulation?
No, it really wouldn't have much of a, an impact on the site. You still need the 24-foot drive lanes, and you have the access. So I, I think having the spaces is, is more of a benefit than not having those couple spaces for the way the site is, is laid out with the cat, with the ordinance requirement.
Okay. For the area in the front of the site where the handicap spaces are proposed, that, that drive aisle kind of, you know, is partially within this property and then partially within the right-of-way property, as it pretty much exists today, right?
That's correct.
Is, but right now, those, that goes directly into the spaces, correct? There's not a lane coming in from the other property towards it, correct?
Right, correct. You come off of 202, and you can pull into those, what, seven or eight spaces along the front of the building.
Mm-hmm, and so.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my question really is, is do you see any issue with the conflict of, you know, cars that can pull right into the site, cars that are gonna be circulating around the site coming, you know, from that drive aisle internally, and then cars that are backing out of those handicap spaces? And, and, you know, specific emphasis on those are now handicap spaces, which may, you know, they may have more impediments to driving than, than a, than a regular driver.
No, I, I mean, really, from looking at the layout and the way we've designed it, and we've talked to our traffic engineer about this, you know, ADA space is usually less, I'll say, used less than regular spaces would be in that, in that area. So by having the circulation go across the front, we do have a stop bar there, and, and that would, that, you know, can control some of the traffic as well. But there's adequate site distance along 202. You can see cars coming. You know there's gonna be gaps in, in traffic because of the traffic light just right down the block. And again, I'll defer some of this to our traffic engineer. But, you know, we feel that there's, there's more than safe circulation that could occur, you know, in the, in the front of the property there.
Okay, and, and because of the way that that's designed, is there anything stopping someone who's circulating the site in that one-way drive aisle from leaving the site there, getting onto 202?
Right now, there's nothing that if they wanted to, you know, just kind of make a little bit more of a sharp left and stop right at that opening, and then pull out. What, there's no signage that prevents them from doing that. They could do that now, today, if they wanted to, from leaving the site. But, you know, again, we would anticipate that they would leave the site out towards Charlotte Drive East, and then go across the road, and then continue on to 202 east from there.
Okay, now there is another movement added there. That's where my concern comes in, that if there is valet, valet drivers who are trying to jockey cars, if there are people trying to leave the site, if there are handicap drivers trying to get out, and then there's someone who cuts across to try and get out of the property, because they've now, there's no other way out from there. What, you get onto Charlotte Drive, and then you have to make a quick left where that exit lane is, onto 202. So I, I, I tend to think that this looks a little more complicated, and potentially in a realistic situation, could, could lead to some conflicts. But I'll let our traffic engineer weigh in on that when, when Mr. Rashad has a chance to, to ask questions. Some of the things that we've heard, and we hear it a lot when there are use variances, in particular, you know, a commercial development in a residential zone, is that, you know, the, this is a residential zone, so the zoning standards, the bulk standards, aren't exactly applicable, right? We, we hear that. And given the zoning being residential, where. were there any, was there any review of the existing commercial zones in the township to be used as a basis for the appropriate standards to apply here?
I myself did not go back and look at some of your other commercial zones, but I would defer to our planner. He may be able to give some more context to that question.
Okay. So, I mean, the question was, was any consideration given in designing the site about kind of adhering to any kind of bulk standards?
I think the consideration that we focused on was looking to provide a parking plan that would meet the ordinance requirements while also providing circulation throughout the site that we feel would be adequate for the restaurant use and the banquet use on the property. So we were working more towards the design intent of the 51 parking spaces and the building that we have here proposed on site.
Okay. I think in light of the improved lot coverage, I just want to note to the board that not a single zone in the township permits over 70% coverage. And the zones that do permit 70% coverage, there's two of them. And one of them is one property. It's the shopping strip mall off of Prince Rogers. It's one property zone. And then the zone on North Bridge, right next to it, the properties, there's a few commercial properties that permit. And I think that they were probably zoned back into providing improved lot coverage because they were already improved. But every other zone in the township permits only up to 60%. So that's just, you know, a comparison point, right? And I do think that when you're looking at an improved lot coverage, variance of this magnitude, especially in comparison to existing bulk standards throughout the township, it's, you know, it can call into question the other, the other trying to trickle down issues, right? The landscaping, the rear yard setback for the trash enclosure, the circulation of the site, all of those things compound when you're looking at that. Because if the improved lot coverage was less, that means the building would be smaller. That'd mean there's more room for landscaping, et cetera. So that's why I bring that up. If other zones were utilized as a basis, I think that there would be less variances and less design waivers sought. One other thing that was my last, I promised the last thing that I have to bring up, is that what was brought up in the review memo in regards to the fencing and the rear landscaping was not a matter of how it would work in the field, but rather that the fence and the landscaping in some places, you know, the center of the tree is right on the fence post. So clearly, that wouldn't work. And so, obviously, right now, the setback is under 10 feet there. So there's a 10-foot planting, just under 10-foot planting strip, and the fence is approximately, let's say, four and a half feet. It's right in the center there. I don't know if you'd be able to plant on either side with four and a half feet on either side of a fence, but I think that that would, if that's what's being proposed, the most aesthetically pleasing thing to do would to fit, if it won't kill the landscaping, trees on either side of the fence, so that a white vinyl fence isn't glaring, and that it has some natural, you know, vegetation that kind of softens the fence, whether it be board-on-board or vinyl or whatever. It'll help soften that wall of fencing along there. So that would be my recommendation, if it's possible. Four and a half feet is tight, you know, for an arborvitae, you probably could. But I want to make sure we're not killing the trees by planting them too close to a fence or too close to each other as well.
And there was two or three existing trees we wanted to try to maintain. So we'd have to work the fence around those trees. But again, we're open to either scenario. And I think, you know, depending on the type of planting, we can maybe make that work in that four and a half foot space. And if you stagger them on either side of the fence, at least it does soften the look of the fence from the neighbor, but then you still get the intent of the height once those trees grow up over, you know, a two-, three-year period to help soften the view from the south.
Thank you, Mr. Moschello. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Moschello. This is a much better plan than the previous one, but it still has some significant issues. Let me start with an easy one. The trash enclosure. Can we move it instead of having it on the south side of the building to the west side? And being on the west side, it will take two spots which would be recovered on the south side. And being on the west side will make it a lot easier to access from a pickup perspective. The truck will come in directly, will pick it up, and then would leave much easier than the existing locations. That would place it approximately 120 feet from the house on Charlotte West and about 150 feet plus from the house on Charlotte East. But more importantly, that would make it far away from the whole backyard area from both houses if you're pushing that location. Can you take a look and tell me if that's possible?
Just to point to the exhibit here, Mr. Rashad, you're talking about this area generally over here somewhere?
No, right next to the building.
Oh, over here?
Yeah, a little bit up, a little bit up.
Oh, right in here?
Yes, right across from the entrance.
I think it's something we can take a look at. I just don't want to commit to that exactly because now the staff has to have a longer walk to get to the trash enclosure. But I think it's something we can maybe consider. Ultimately, there's no loss of parking because it's going to take up other spaces. But that's something we can consider looking into.
So now we'll move to the corner of Charlotte Drive East and 202, and that's really a problematic area. But first, I want to inform the board that if you're not doing any work within the state right-of-way, there is a very high likelihood that you will not need to get a DOT permit. Are you aware of that?
Typically, yes.
Yeah. So because the driveway that is open on 202 will not increase in any significant fashion, the DOT will write you a letter that says, "Go ahead, proceed. You don't have to apply. We're not interested." Have you talked to the DOT about this? Have you?
I'm going to have to defer those comments to our traffic engineer, who's going to be able to talk in more detail about the DOT aspect of the project.
Okay, sounds good. So in that same area, I have a plan of yours that I'm looking at a submission, and I'm looking particularly at Sheet 3 of 11. And you have some red markings on the plan delineating the front driveway. And you're showing an encroachment onto the state right-of-way of approximately maybe five feet?
I'm not seeing any markings other than the stabilized turf that we're showing, you know, for the grass. But I'm not seeing any other pavement markings in the 202 right-of-way, unless I'm missing something.
Well, we're trying to figure out, Bill and I, who gave us this submission, but it has, but anyway, regardless of whether your plan has--
I'd take a look really quick.
Yes. Whether your plan has the red markings or not, the red markings actually delineate the space you need.
I didn't do that. Someone marked that up.
Someone, okay.
Yeah.
So, but it makes sense because if you don't delineate it in that fashion, the space that is left between the edge of the parking space and the right-of-way, I'm going to guess that is maybe 10 feet?
It's 10, 11 feet between the right-of-way line and the back of the ADA spaces.
So you will be encroaching, which is fine, by the way. I'm not against that, but I'm just asking. So you will be encroaching within the state right-of-way to make that maneuver?
No different than the encroachment that's there today already for cars pulling into the site from 202, backing up out of those parking spaces and driving across the front of the property. So they're doing that now, you know, in terms of that movement.
And I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, how that would affect us and the board to approve an application where the circulation is encroaching into a public right-of-way. It's a legal issue that we need to look at. But staying on that same subject, is there any possibility to go to the state and tell them, "Look, we're going to close the driveway on Route 202," which, by the way, Mr. Chairman, will not affect traffic in terms of Charlotte East and West? Because right now, this design will not generate much traffic at all to that driveway on 202. We're talking probably less than a trip per hour. It's very insignificant. But if you go to the DOT and give them an incentive and tell them, "Look, this is an open driveway. We can close it. If you can give us a little easement so we could use, we can officially use part of the right-of-way to do our circulation, and then we can open up that bottleneck where you have the stop bar and allow for a two-way traffic so that these drivers driving the cars in the accessible spaces can go back in the other direction and don't have to negotiate that turn by 202, and they don't have to go on Charlotte Drive and ending up going through the whole loop on Charlotte Drive." Is that something the applicant is willing to look at?
I mean, I guess we'll look at it, but it's really more of the traffic engineer's wheelhouse, not so much the site engineers.
Okay.
If you could share whatever you're looking at, too, because for the record, we don't have what you're looking at.
Understood. Yeah, I'm not sure who did it. That's how I received it.
I did not mark that up, but I can--
But for the record, Mr. Chairman, the plan I have has red markings that delineate the encroachment of vehicles at the front of the restaurant, which, you know, helps the reviewer visualize the path of vehicles and the amount of encroachment.
Ms. Jennings, is your traffic engineer in the room tonight?
No, we had another hearing. He was going to come.
And if you could get with your traffic engineer and maybe get a call between these two individuals to make sure that when he does testify, he has this information and he's ready to answer that question.
Great. Will do.
And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few questions for Rob. Going back to the stabilized paver, Rob, for the fire trucks, did you guys account for that in your lot coverage calculations?
We did not, and it is actually over the right-of-way line, so it wouldn't be calculated in lot coverage. I mean, I could include that little bit of the strip that is between the mountable curb and the property line, which, you know, it is about 80% or 85% pervious, so it'd only be like a 10% coverage. But it would swing, it could swing it maybe a .1 or something like that at most. But I'll check it and get back to you with that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you have that lot coverage number nailed down in terms of what you're requesting. And then as far as the fire official is concerned, back to that issue, in his latest memo, is that the only issue, the fact that you don't have technically a 24-foot fire lane in front of the restaurant adjacent to 202? Is that the only issue right now that you need to discuss with him as far as not being able to comply with?
I think from his letter perspective, yes. I'm looking at his letter now, dated November 21, 2025, just to make sure he's comfortable with the stabilized turf, which would give him the 24 feet. He does mention something else in his letter, and I'm going to ask him about this because I'm not sure what exactly he means by it, but he says "concerns power lines in front of building on Route 202." So I don't know if he's pointing out the fact that you've got a main power line going across the front edge of the property, but there is an overhead line that runs across the front edge of the property here. You could actually see it on the aerial. So I don't know if he's concerned about aerial access if a fire truck were to have to park on 202, or if a fire truck's parked in the site. I'll talk to him about that. But I do want to point out that on Charlotte Drive West and Charlotte Drive East, the power lines are on the opposite sides of the road. So if a fire truck did have to set up from an aerial perspective on the public road, there are no power lines on those streets that would be, you know, in the way of that aerial truck. But I'll talk to him about that and see what his concern is there. But we can't do nothing about the power lines. That's where they are on 202.
Okay. But the main takeaway is that between now and the next hearing, you'll endeavor to meet or discuss with Tom Scolera, his memo, any of his issues, and make sure you guys are on the same page.
Correct. And we can comply with all those concerns in the letter. That is correct.
As far as the parking is concerned, your earlier testimony was, I think, 51 spaces being provided based on 180 seats in all of the uses? Is that?
Yes, that's correct.
And what you testified, though, and you may have just misspoke, I just want to make sure it's clear. You had mentioned 80 seats for the banquet, 50 for the restaurant, and 30 for the rooftop. Did you mean 100 for the banquet, 50 for the existing restaurant, and 30 for the roof?
Yeah, I don't know. I said 80. I apologize. That's 100.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
I was thinking 180, and I said 80. But yes, the calculation is based on 180 seats.
Okay. And I know we'll hear from your architect, but can you answer, is there still going to be outdoor seating? I know there's outdoor seating, and you testified with COVID, post-COVID, there was the patio that was being used for outdoor seating. Is there any outdoor seating being proposed in the new alignment, or we want to defer to Craig later?
The seating is going to be within the existing restaurant, within the banquet facility, and then you got the seats for the rooftop bar on top of the building. There's no seats proposed outside beyond that.
Okay. So that patio that exists now goes away, and everything is going to be internal moving forward?
Right. The building is going where the patio is. There is going to be a courtyard out here where people can congregate, you know, waiting for, in the summer months, waiting for a table, you know, and things like that. But there's no seating out there.
Okay. As far as drainage and stormwater impacts are concerned, this is a minor project, correct?
That is correct.
In terms of the stormwater control ordinance?
Yes.
But you guys on your plan are proposing to construct, looks like an underground detention basin in the rear parking lot?
Yes.
And that basin is going to capture runoff from most of the new parking lot?
It's going to--
Is that fair to say?
The majority of it, except for those seven spaces or so that are on Charlotte Drive that drain down there today. But for the majority of the new impervious, that's just going to collect that.
And it's also going to capture the runoff from the proposed roof and the existing roof of the restaurant, or just the proposed?
We're saying the proposed roof, and we're going to, we have to just take a look at the existing roof. The calculations included the existing roof, but I have to make sure we can pick up all the roof leaders. The intent would be to pick up the existing roof as well.
Okay. So existing roof, too.
Yeah.
And your prior testimony was that in the existing condition today, there is no drainage facilities at all, correct?
Right. There's no drainage control facilities at all.
Everything sheets off the site.
Yes.
Okay. And you had correctly raised in my report, we had a couple of technical comments as far as the drainage concern. You're going to address, you're going to work to address those concerns before the next meeting, or possibly as a condition of approval if it gets to that point?
I think we can do them as conditions because it's just basically adjusting some calculations. It's not going to change the overall layout of the property. It would just be, if anything, the underground basin might get slightly bigger, the outlet structure may get modified slightly, but it would have no visual impact on the project.
Okay. And I want to jump over to the discussion about the fencing and the landscaping on the southerly property line. Just so I'm clear, the question is not you only have room for either a fence or landscaping, correct? The question is the alignment or the arrangement of, does the fence go closer to the property line and landscaping behind it, or vice versa? It's not a question of is there room to accommodate both?
That's right. We have 10 feet of space there, which is more than adequate for a fence and landscaping. It's just how we want that look to be along that property line.
Okay, very good. And two more questions. As far as the lighting plan is concerned, it looks like you have some slight light spillover on that southerly property line. Can you make some tweaks to the shielding or to the fixtures themselves to ensure that there's no light pollution emanating to the rear?
Yeah, I know the ordinance says, I know the ordinance says you're not supposed to have more than one-foot candle, but there is a slight slippage there. What we can also do, too, Bill, I was looking at this, we can reduce the heights of those two lights. They were at 16 right now. I could bring them down to 14 or, you know, or 12 on the back property line. We've done that before close to residential zones and to just kind of reduce that spillage a little bit. So that's something we could certainly offer up to minimize that impact.
Okay. And last question, Sands Harry Sewer. Did you testify that you will be able to comply with any of the comments in the sewer utilities memo?
Yeah, that's correct. At this time, without an MEP engineer and the kitchen being reconfigured, I'm not sure exactly if we're going to need to come out of the building with a lateral to connect to the main, or if we can use the existing lateral services in the building now. So that's just something we have to work out. But again, we'll comply with the comments in the letter.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Rob. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Bill, you know, I don't know if I'm going to be here next year. Could you put down in your notes that when we're dealing with the underground retention basin, maintenance becomes a huge issue with these things. And when maintenance fails, the unit fails. We've seen this in Martinsville happen numerous times over the course of decades. These things either don't get cleaned out or they're not maintained properly. There has to be a mechanism that if this thing overflows into the neighbors' properties, that the Bridgewater Township, whoever-- Bridgewater Township, whoever, is able to go in there and clean this thing out. So you're going to have to grant the township an easement, not required easement, but if they need to get access here, because the owner at the time, or an owner in the future, is not making repairs, we have to protect the property owners, because this has happened in the past. It's happened in Martinsville. It's probably happened in Bridgewater and other places. Could you just follow up on that?
Yeah, 100%. And that's a, that's a really good point. One other thing that I failed to mention is, an operations and maintenance manual really is a must for a site like this. They're going to have to prepare.
We need to go a step further, because-
I agree.
Everyone agrees in these meetings, we'll do whatever you say. And then there's no enforcement mechanism after this board is free and clear a decade from now. So we need, you know, when this thing fails, you've got neighbors all around this thing on three sides, and if the thing doesn't work, we need to be, go in there and take control. And it's happened in Martinsville. We have a property, you know, right now that has a malfunctioning underground retention basin. So just follow up. Thank you.
Will do.
All right.
That's certainly not an issue, because part of, we can, I didn't see it in Bill's letter, but it's a good point. We do need an operations and maintenance manual, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, and in that manual, it will give, we'll do through an easement, or an access easement to allow the township, if the property owner doesn't maintain the facilities correctly, to come in and be able to maintain the facility and clean it out.
Right, right. We're not required to maintain it, but in the event that there is a failure of maintenance, we can go in there.
And that O&amp;M manual will be the mechanism to allow that to happen, and it should be, should be part of any condition that the board look favorably upon this.
Very good. All right. So with that said, we have a few minutes left. Thank you for being patient. We're going to open up the members of public to ask questions on Mr. Moschello, and it's very important we follow kind of the standard operating procedure, because this could eventually end up in front of a judge who's going to look at this body to make sure that we followed the rules. So I wonder, for you guys to follow the rules, there's just one, two things. You got to talk into the microphone, and then you can ask questions on anything that Mr. Moschello has testified on. So he's a professional engineer. He's an expert in engineering. None of us are. I don't think any of you are, and if you are, please let us know. But please keep your questions to what Mr. Moschello has testified, and, you know, we'll hang around a little bit after 10, but we'll try and get in a few. But obviously, this will go to the next meeting, and you can continue asking questions. So whoever wants to be first, come on up, and we need your name and address.
And I think Nancy has placed a sign-in sheet there, so if you would just put your, sign your name there as well. Print it, please.
And I should have mentioned, after the applicant has given all their testimony and their experts, you will have an applicant, a time to basically say whatever you want, as long as you want. You can speak for, and you can speak against the case at the end.
Thank you. My name is Tom Horvath, and for 75 years, I've lived on Charlotte Drive. I've seen a lot of improvements over the years, and this is one improvement I feel should not be approved.
Mr. Horvath, your address on Charlotte?
15 Charlotte Drive.
Okay, and this is time for questions of the engineer? As the chairman said, there's a time when you'll have to come up and give us your opinion, but right now, it's questions.
So my question is that the valet parking they keep talking about, where will the overflow be accommodated?
We were asked this question about potential Plan B that was mentioned, and we discussed this in the time between the break that we had, and there is an opportunity, and our operational architect person can touch on this as well, there is an opportunity to have an overflow of between 10 and 12 cars where we could park them in the property across Charlotte Drive East. There is that opportunity there for that, but I'll leave that.
Sorry, what property is that?
Oh, I'm sorry. It is the existing commercial property, which is designated as Lot 1 on Block 163.01, which is to the east of Charlotte Drive East.
Okay, so if we're going to bring in a different property into the application, if we're saying that we're going to use that for parking for this site, then I think we need to make that lot part of the application, and it's a use variance as well, right? You can't, you can't park commercial parking on another lot, right, for this particular use. So it's going to create a variance situation, which is fine. I mean, I just think you have to notice it for the next meeting.
Right. We'll give it some thought, because, I mean, we meet your parking requirement. We were just trying to address in the-
It's not a bad idea.
Right.
It's just the variance that we have to notice.
Right.
Was asked about overflow, so we were-
And that might be a really good answer, but, but, you know, just for protection purposes, I think that we need to notice that as a variance.
Understood.
My second question is, how do you accommodate the overflow if both lots are filled up?
Again, we, I talked about overflow for the site, but again, we're looking at the site from a parking use perspective, and we feel that, you know, the 51 spaces, based on the ordinance, and based on the uses and how the site's going to operate, is going to be satisfactory for the project site. And as I mentioned in my testimony, with valets, you can get a couple additional cars on the current property, depending on how you stack them and how you park them in the parking spaces. So we feel that the site is adequately designed to handle the seating that we have on the property.
Thank you.
You know, just to get back to that parking on the other lot, I think if you pursue it, you should be able to show how you're going to get the cars back to the site, right? Some, you know, how you're going to do that?
Hi there. How you doing? My name's Daniel Gerlach. I live at 9 Charlotte Drive. And I think everybody here, one of the top issues is about the parking. Currently, I want to know how many spots you said there was currently at the, at the site?
There was 32 spaces that were existing, and I think a couple of them were taken up by the back patio right now. I think it's like 27 or 25.
I was going to say, I walked the lot, and it's 26. You could Google Earth it right now. It's 26. You could look at it. All right. How many, what's the occupancy of the restaurant, by the way?
There are about 70 seats on the inside, and the architect will be able to answer that more clearly.
So you put 70 seats inside, and how many on the patio?
60 on the patio.
Okay. And is there, is there an occupancy limit, like a fire marshal occupancy limit for the restaurant then? It's 70?
I'll have to defer that to the project architect. That's interior to the building.
Okay. And who do I contact when it's, you know, operating over capacity?
That I couldn't-
I call the police, the fire marshal?
It would be either those or the zoning officer, depending on the time, right?
It's going to be at night.
Yeah, so then police.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Atul Tarji. I'm at 5 Charlotte Drive, property directly adjacent to this development. My question is regarding your stormwater handling. How, what are the dimensions of that underground detention basin?
It's approximately, it's maybe 80 feet wide by, I'm sorry, 80 feet long by about 20 feet wide, just approximately, 80 by 20.
Six feet deep?
We have 36-inch diameter, hold on one second, just to get the plan. A 36-inch diameter pipe with stone, so it's probably about five feet, five and a half feet deep.
Yeah, 80 by 30 some.
80 by 20 roughly, yeah.
And how close is it to the property line to the south?
We are basically-
Pretty much touching it.
I'm pointing to the plan. We're about, we're 10 feet to the property line from the parking, and we're probably about another five feet into the edge of the system, so I'll say 14, 15 feet.
Yeah. So have you done any kind of studies to show that that water seepage, which is coming, as you testified earlier, from the roofs, from the entire, pretty much the whole lot, it's all going to go in there now, and it's not going to bubble up, go into the adjacent neighborhood?
Well, the intent is, with the design, we did submit a stormwater report, and Mr. Burr asked us to modify some-
You did some percolation studies? Is that what you did?
We did not do a percolation study yet, because it's, it's not major development.
No studies?
No, we did calculations.
Theoretical calculations?
We did calculations that are, that are accepted by standards for designing the site.
No actual percolation studies?
We haven't done a perk test yet out there. But, and I'll say this, we are going to do one. Mr. Burr asked for it, but the requirement does not, the calculations, or I'll say the code, doesn't say we have to do infiltration, because we're not major development. We did propose some infiltration. If it doesn't have to, if the infiltration doesn't work, we can just, again, design the system to hold the water. But, you know, again, if you're having an underground system, and we can have some infiltration back into the ground, that's a positive from a stormwater perspective. So we can certainly, we're going to check those numbers to make sure by doing some imperkulation tests, but nonetheless, the system's going to be designed to reduce the runoff leaving the property compared to what's happening under existing conditions.
And putting it all underground in that detention basin?
Putting it underground, yes. Today, it just-
And so are you guaranteeing that that is not going to go into the neighboring property basements, and they won't flood?
Again, I'm going to say that that system's going to be designed to infiltrate a certain amount of runoff into the ground.
Into the ground, right next to the adjacent properties?
It's 30, 40 feet away from the adjacent home.
80 foot by 34 foot by about-
80 by 20, roughly, yeah.
So all that water, imagine how big that is. And it's not going to flood the neighborhood?
No. The system will not flood the neighborhood, no.
Okay. And in terms of the tests that you did, did you consider any high-water table tests?
No, like I said, we're going to do the soil testing, actually in the wet season in January and February, just to make sure that we don't have any issues with groundwater. But again, based on the code and based on the requirements, you don't have, we don't have to do an infiltration system here. We're doing it because it's part of providing some additional infiltration and reducing the runoff leaving the site. We can take away the infiltration and just do storage, and it would still have the same effect at the end of the day.
So you're saying that the added discharge volume with the runoff is not going to impact the downstream neighborhood? That's what the testimony is?
It's not going to impact the downstream neighborhood, because by leaving the site as it is today, where everything just runs off the property, no controls, it ends up in the pipes the same time as the runoff from all the other properties. I go and put a stormwater system on site. I control the rate of runoff leaving the property. I slow it down, and what happens then is, during a storm event, the pipes peak before the basin peaks, and therefore, the pipe system will have already started draining. It will be going down, and my basin will be letting out more water, taking advantage of the fact that the pipe system can now handle that runoff over the course of time. So because there's no other stormwater detention systems in the area here, and this would be right at the top of the run, this system will allow for reduction in rate to account for the increased impervious, while also reducing runoff coming off of the property today, because it's uncontrolled today.
Are you aware of any, just go on to a different topic. Are you aware of any master plan or policies or other townships that promote banquet hall facilities or rooftop bars in R20 residential zones?
I can't, I'm not aware of that, answer that. I'm not aware of that in any other towns, no. I don't know the exact ordinance of other towns that would allow that.
So this would be kind of setting a precedent probably for this town, right?
Well, it's a, you know, land use applications really aren't precedential in that sense. They don't set a precedent, because every property is different, and it's pretty safe to assume that no residential zone anywhere would allow the commercial use. But that's why they're here.
Now, how many variances and waivers are you requiring in total?
I think I went through them. There were, give me one second, just give you the-
About 16?
I think there were 10 variances and six design waivers. I mean, some of the variances were basically because you had two lots for the use variance, so it's doubled up in that regard. But yeah, there were 10 variances and six design waivers.
Having so many variances for FAR, impervious coverage, buffering, parking, even the parking size of the actual parking stalls themselves, does that signal a site that's actually suitable for this proposed type of monstrous development?
Actually, here from our planner, again, because we're talking about an R20 zone here, a residential zone, and this was mentioned also up here as well before, your residential requirements for coverage and floor area are generally lower than a commercial zone. So while you have the issue where we have a commercial use in a residential zone, and these uses have been here for a long time, residential zones tend to have lesser levels of allowing lot coverage and FAR as opposed to commercial zones.
So having those lesser zones, the intent is to preserve low-density, quiet residential character of a neighborhood. So this would augment that, or just detract from that?
Again, we're talking about a use that's been on the property for over 50 years.
Right, and you're compounding it by adding FAR to it?
We're increasing the size of it, yes, because we're asking for an FAR variance, but the uses, the underlying use has been there for over 50 years.
But making more intense use of it now, right?
We're making, we're making the building larger, yes.
And intensifying the use, is that correct?
I'm not going to say I'm intensifying, if I'm making the building larger.
Isn't the FAR-
I'm making the-
Measure up the intensity?
I'm increasing the FAR, yes.
Okay. So we've increased the intensity in a low-density neighborhood with quiet character. What were the assumptions that you had for the number of events for valet usage?
We're essentially, again, I'll defer some of this to our operational architect expert as well, but valets would typically be on the busier nights, which would typically be Friday and Saturday nights, and depending on maybe Thursdays, depending on the event space that would be occurring there. It's typical for valet.
Okay. So are you the person to answer these questions, or?
You probably, if they're operational questions, you probably want to wait for the architect to ask them those questions.
Were your assumptions based on operational data, or were they theoretical, just, you just assumed Friday and Saturday?
Our assumptions are on operational, of how the site's going to operate, how the applicant intends to operate the property.
Theoretically, how they plan to do things?
It's not theoretical. It's a business model that they plan to implement, yes.
Models based on actual data?
It's a business model. Again, you're talking about a business model for a banquet and restaurant. There's many banquets and restaurants throughout the state of New Jersey. Sure, most of them operate in similar fashion.
So another variance you're looking at is, how many loading zones are required for facilities of size?
The ordinance requires two loading docks-
Right?
For a building of that size, yeah.
But we're not going to have two. We're going to have one.
Correct.
And even in that one, are you going to meet this size of the loading dock that is required?
As I mentioned in my testimony, given this type of building here, and while you may be saying it's a large structure, it's relatively, in terms of catering halls and bank facilities, it's relatively modest, you don't need a dedicated loading space for deliveries, because those deliveries occur off-peak hours. They occur during the day, usually between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM, when your restaurant or banquet space is not in heavy use, typically during the week, and therefore, you don't need to have a dedicated space for a truck to park for what may amount to 5, 10 minutes to unload and then move on. If it's there for a little bit longer, again, still, you have more than adequate circulation on site to account for that.
Right. So that loading dock is actually shared with the parking space area, right, right?
Yes, it's a shared space, yeah.
So there's cross-traffic that could occur? Is that correct?
It's minimal during the day. It really is. It's not an issue for circulation on site.
So we require two, you don't have to require the one, even the one that you have is not meeting the size requirement. That's why you have the variance, right?
So we're asking for the variance, yes.
And it's going to be also sharing the same space as other parking spaces?
It's not sharing a space. It's utilizing-
Utilizing that same space?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right. So what's the square foot requirement to be considered a major development? 10,000 some odd square feet?
Major stormwater development? Major stormwater development definition is an acre of disturbance, which we don't have an acre of land here, so we're under that, and/or a quarter acre of new impervious surface. And in this case, we're only increasing the impervious surface, I think it was the 4,000 plus or minus square feet on the site, so we don't trigger either one of those thresholds.
So, okay. So including the other impervious surface, how much is the total at?
Total on site? I think I said it was 30, hold on one second.
Square feet wise?
Yeah, square feet. Just give me one second to find the chart. 30,930 square feet is the total. 30,930 square feet is the total impervious coverage.
30, now that doesn't sound, are you sure? 30,000 square feet?
Wait, I'm sorry. Hold on, wait, no. Yeah, 30,930 square feet is the total lock coverage.
For a major development, what's the square foot requirement?
Major development is a quarter acre of new impervious.
Which is, how many square feet? 10,000?
10,000 and change, yeah.
So a major development would be 10,000 square foot.
Of new, of new impervious.
Of new impervious.
We're starting off with-
So technically, the new is not that much, but the total is 30,000.
But remember, we're starting off with 25,000 square feet. The way the rules are written and looked at-
Grant you that.
You start off with 25,000 square feet, adding 4,000 square feet. That's the new impervious that's being added. I don't get penalized for what I have on site to start with.
No, we're trying to penalize you. I'm just asking the question as to how we're trying to look at this. I would think that we'd want to treat it as if, you know, on the safer side, to make sure that we're treated as a major development versus something technically it would be falling under that. But that's a design choice, and I understand-
Yeah, sir, it's 10 after 10. Our meetings typically stop at 10. If you have one more question, I'll let you get it in, and you absolutely can come back.
I have many more questions, I won't be asking you one.
I think you do, yeah.
So if you want to stop, that's fine.
I don't want to stop. It's at 10 o'clock, our meetings stop.
We've been here, the entire neighborhood has been here since 7, probably even earlier.
Yeah.
And this is the third time we're here, so I understand, you know, the need to postpone this, try to wait this out, which is fine, if that's what we want to do.
I absolutely know what it's like to be on your side. I know it's frustrating, but there's a set of rules that we have to follow.
I haven't even gotten to the rooftop bar yet, so we can continue this next time.
Yes, and you can be first up, and you can continue right where you left off, I promise you.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
All right. So with that, we're going to close tonight's meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for December 23 at 7:00 PM. Rich, why don't you talk about that meeting, and that was held over for emergency situations?
The second December meeting, since it was December 23, was held for emergency purposes only, for which we don't have any.
So the emergency's over?
There's, right, there's currently no emergency for that meeting, so the December 23 meeting will not occur.
Nancy, are you okay with this board canceling that meeting December 23?
Yes, I'm okay.
Okay, and I would assume that the rest of the board, anyone against it, please?
I move we cancel.
All right, so anyone against? No one against?
Okay, so for purposes of this hearing, though, right, and this application, this hearing is going to adjourn at this point, and it will be rescheduled to the board's reorganization meeting on January 13, 2026, at 7:00 PM in this room, really just for the purpose of assigning a new date, right? Yeah, so there'll be no testimony on January 13. We're just going to assign a new date to this applicant to continue, okay? And with respect to time, counsel, can we extend? I don't know where we are on time, but just through February?
It's fine.
Okay, so through February 28 is the extension, okay?
All right, that completes our 2025 calendar. Thank you, everyone, for helping out. Thank you for being here. God bless, have wonderful holidays. Motion to adjourn, please. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got a second on that, right? Okay.
What is the status of the request to reopen the A21 JCC?